Especially for council members who work a nine to five.
Mayor Schneider, just letting you know that I do see Commissioner Wong as well, so we have full planning commission.
Excellent. Thank you Chair Joe. City Attorney. Um. Is it better to talk about? The. Decision on, I'm not sure what to call it, on the, the three of us that live close to do it right at the top of the agenda before the consent calendar, or do it before we open up the joint meeting, because we're kind of opening it up at the beginning.
I would say do it before the joint meeting, since that would also involve the planning commission.
Okay. And a second roll call. Okay, got it.
There's no vote required for it.
Oh, correct. No, it's just a timing on it, and I didn't get a chance to go over process. We are still looking for Councilwoman Pappen.
I did just get off the phone with her. She said she's hopping on right now.
Great. Thank you, City Clerk.
You're welcome. Okay, she is in the weight room. Okay.
Excellent. Good evening to a both special council meeting and a joint city, Millbrae City Council and Planning Commission meeting tonight. If we could please do roll call for City Council.
Councilmember Hollibur. Councilmember Fung.
Here.
Councilmember Pappen.
Present.
Vice Mayor Leva.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
All members of the Millbrae City Council are present.
Excellent. Thank you. And if you could all please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have one action for City Council tonight. It's consent calendar. It is extension of the interim ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on the installation of artificial turf and synthetic grass in the city of Millbrae for a period of 10 months and 15 days, and this is an action item. And if there is no council comment, if there could be a motion by City Council in a second.
So moved. Oliva.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Pappen. Any discussion? Council, I'm looking to see if you're raising hands or anything. Seeing none. This is consent calendar, so not opening it for public comment. If the City Clerk could call a vote.
Councilmember Hollibur.
One year seems a long time for urgency ordinance, but I.
Councilmember Fung.
Councilman Fung, you might be on mute. Ah, there you are. Thank you.
Councilmember Patten.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Leva.
Aye.
Mayor Schneider.
Aye.
The City Council approves the extension of the interim ordinance establishing the temporary moratorium on the installation of artificial turf and synthetic grass in the city of Millbrae for a period of 10 months and 15 days by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, City Clerk.
Mayor, could I respond to Councilman Hollibur's question?
Certainly.
Sure. We're only allowed two extensions to a moratorium ordinance, and so while staff believes they will fully come back to the council within six months with this policy, we didn't want to get caught up with an inability to extend it at all. So we went for the standard, you know, 10, 10 and a half month extension, but the council would be able to rescind that at any time, and particularly after the policy is in place. So that's the reason.
Thank you, Mr. Conneran. Okay, um. Now, City Clerk, could you call to order the joint Millbrae City Council and Planning Commission? And please do roll call for both of us.
Absolutely. Councilmember Hollibur.
Present.
Councilmember Fung.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pappen.
Still here.
Vice Mayor Leva.
Me too.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Commissioner Dylan Negro.
Present.
Commissioner Quig.
I know I saw her.
I think you're on mute. Commissioner Quig.
So sorry.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wong. Commissioner Wong.
Present. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Vice Chair Davis.
Here.
Chair Joe.
Here.
All members of the Millbrae City Council and Planning Commission are present.
Thank you very much. And before we move into the topic for tonight, just a point of clarification, three, two council members and one planning commission live within 1,000 feet of Magnolia Avenue, which puts this project, which is part of the general plan, but the downtown specific plant priority development area. So the City Attorney can go into more detail, but they have checked to ensure that the three of us are perfectly able to participate in the process tonight. Mr. Conneran, do you want to go into better detail?
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. The, it's true. I mean, two council members, Councilmember Schneider, Councilmember Hollibur, and Commissioner Wong all live, have within 1,000, I think it's as little as 500 feet of the specific plan area. However, that area covers such a large swath of the city that what's applicable is a rule called the public generally exception that says that despite any other calculation, it might find that they would have a conflict of interest due to proximity to the area. Because that policy, the action on the specific plan will affect such a large part of the, of the city, fully well more than 25% of the commercial properties, which is one of the measurements needed to invoke that exception. They can, they are free to participate in that. There is an exception to the exception, which is that if somehow this policy is going to have a unique financial effect upon them or their interest in the property, and they each have different types of interests, then that conclusion may change. But certainly with regard to this session with deals with the streetscape improvements, there's, there's just no chance of that. So everyone is free to fully participate in this action.
Thank you, City Attorney, and to the City Manager and City Attorney. Thank you for looking into this and making sure that we are dotting all of the i's. With that, the item on the agenda tonight is a joint study session of the City of Millbrae, City Council and Planning Commission to discuss the preliminary draft streetscape plan of the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan. This is an informational item, and staff, I believe you have a presentation.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you. Good evening to members of the City Council. Also, welcome Planning Commission Chair Jean-Joe and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Tom Williams, City Manager. Thank you all for being here and taking the time for this very important item. So as we kick things off tonight in this study session, I'd like to just kind of provide some context before I hand it over to Ms. Darcy Smith, our Community Development Director, and our team of design consultants. So this streetscape plan encompasses the public improvements, the amenities and design for items, you know, like sidewalks, sidewalk widths, materials, street trees, streetlights, streetlight standards, pedestrian circulation, bike lane improvements, outdoor dining, parklets, everything within the streetscape and public right of way within our downtown Broadway and El Camino Real corridor. So all of the amenities that make up a public space in the downtown and El Camino provide for an active and vibrant community. That's what we have the opportunity to discuss this evening. This, the good news is this is very early in the process. This plan will not come to the Planning Commission or to the City Council until next fall. And so we wanted to have this study session to really discuss the vision, get the direction from, from you all about what that built environment will look like, those amenities. We have, again, the opportunity before us, starting now, to determine what you want the city of Millbrae to look like in its downtown and in its, in its public realm. So we have learned a lot over the past two years, you know, now we're in the last month of 2021, that people enjoy outdoor dining in Millbrae. People enjoy walking in the downtown and enjoying the atmosphere that we have. And now, you know, again, this is the time and place to say, okay, these are the amenities that we would like to see. Move the city in a positive direction. Turn the page for the city of Millbrae. And again, for the vision of the redesign of our public spaces. And so I'm excited about this. I hope you all are. And I don't want you to feel pressure, you know, tonight, because again, we have plenty of time. We, you know, this will come before you next fall. And this is really a study session to hear from you all what your vision is after we, you know, hear the presentation from, again, our Community Development Director and Design Team. So let's have fun with it. This is going to make a huge difference for the look and feel and aesthetics of the city of Millbrae for many decades to come. Once it's approved and once we start implementing it. So unless there are any questions, I'd like to introduce Ms. Darcy Smith, our Community Development Director, and, you know, get into the presentation this evening.
Hi, good evening. Thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, Planning Commissioner Joe, and the Plan Commissioners. It's great to see everyone here tonight for such an exciting topic. As the City Manager said, this is actually something to get, I think, really excited about. And we've learned from, from seeing you in the past and know you want to give us early impact. So we're really excited about this tonight. So we have a great presentation that WRT, our planning consultant team can queue up. So if, if we can start screen sharing the presentation, that would be great. It's going to be the main presenter is Mr. Jacob Tobias by WRT. So can we get that queued up? Okay, great. Let's just make it full screen. Okay, great. So I'm Darcy Smith, the Community Development Director, and I'll be assisted tonight with this great presentation on the Broadway and El Camino Real streetscape plan by Mr. Jacob Tobias, who's the Senior Associate at WRT, and really the principal author and landscape architect behind this plan, along with assistance from James Stickley, the Principal at WRT, who you've seen before. The past study session in September, he talked a lot about the specific plan and the vision for that, and you gave us great feedback on that. And so next slide. And also, there's many other members of this larger general plan and specific plan team here tonight. We have representatives from the lead consultant, Mentor Harnish, including Jim Harnish, who's leading the overall effort, and other representatives tonight. So thanks, everyone, for attending. But tonight's objective and agenda is really focused on this amazing preliminary draft Broadway and El Camino Real streetscape plan that we distributed to you last week. And for any members of the public who are near tonight, this is available online. So if you're following along, please bring it up, because it's really quite, quite an impressive document, nearly 80 pages with some great graphics and images. So for sure, we'll see your presentation, and I would appreciate if we could hold all questions till the end, because we have a really thorough presentation on this streetscape plan and executive level summary to really inform the next step, which would be to receive your questions and for us to provide answers on this presentation, followed by public comments. And then, at the end, the bulk of the item tonight will be to receive your comments to us regarding this preliminary draft streetscape plan. And as the City Manager said, we're here really early in the process. And we want your feedback, but tonight is not the only night. If you leave this meeting, you have some additional feedback, we'll, you know, we really welcome it as well as from the public, because we want to have an iterative refinement of this plan to ensure it's consistent with your vision for the future. Next slide. So we would like to focus you in on a few topics. So I'm going to repeat, we're going to bring this slide up at the end, too, and this is by no means the list of what we want feedback on. These are just the higher level policy items that if you listen to the consultant step through the presentation following me, that you'll focus on, focus on these items. Number one, the most important component of the plan is these design concepts for Broadway and El Camino Real that they'll step through, showing you the sections and the plan view and the renderings. They'll spend some time going over a potential phasing approach from El Camino Real, and phasing just allows cities to move forward in different phases. And what's special to remember here is that we can reuse improvements made in phase one and phase two. I always like to jump to phase two and have everything done, but we may find it advantageous to do some phasing here. So we'll include some overview of that. We'll also give you some information about the bicycle facilities on El Camino Real, which are really important to get feedback on, and then the planting concept and green infrastructure. And again, this is by no means an exhaustive list, but just the, the plan preparers thought and staff that this might guide your conversation tonight. Next slide. So again, as the City Manager mentioned, this is part of a simultaneous planning effort that we've been working on full steam ahead for a few years now, but we're really, really in, in this, the, the plan preparation phase right now that's really intensive. And we came to you earlier this year and got some great feedback on other items, such as the general plan vision and guiding principles, and we're refining that document, and we'll have it ready for you next year. Also working on the downtown and El Camino Real specific plan. You gave us some great feedback at our last study session on that. And that provides the policy framework for design standards in the downtown district, which is a broader area and the entire El Camino Real corridor. What you're seeing tonight, the streetscape plan, is an appendix to that plan. So it's nested under the specific plan and just focuses on these two streets. And in case you're wondering where wire those two streets, I think of Broadway as really the heart of the city, the city's living room, the front porch where everyone gets out and you see your neighbors, and we do great events downtown, as you know, Beats Brews and Vines and our Wine Festival. It really is sort of our front porch where we, we shine, and we're trying to create a village there, village atmosphere. It's very charming and quaint. So that's the heart, as I say, of the city. And El Camino Real, that's our spine, really important. Everyone needs a, you know, the backbone's holding them up, and it's a workhorse. There's that carries a lot of traffic. But we're also trying to make that area a transit corridor that's very multimodal. So we have to focus on bikes and peds and, and safety. And that, and also beautifying it, making it a grand boulevard, as you've heard in the past, with the Grand Boulevard Initiative planning efforts. So these piece together, they're really dovetailed, and I know you might be asking, well, where's that specific plan, right? We've been talking about that for years. It's coming early next year. This, this effort is a really important component that we wanted to get to early, because it's really important to that vision. But we're not quite ready for that, that plan yet, but it's coming soon. And this, this meeting tonight will really inform the finishing touches of that plan as it relates to private land uses and private design standards. But tonight, the streetscape plan is really focused, as the City Manager said, on the public realm and the public areas, the streets, which I think are just really integral and sometimes actually overlooked when we talk about land use plans. And last, the other component on the bottom left, the active transportation plan, again, that really did inform the streetscape plan. So everything is kind of dovetailing together. I'm really proud of this community and the staff and consultants for working really hard on that active transportation plan, which is the citywide bicycle and pedestrian master plan to enhance and improve circulation and connectivity and safety. We had a bunch of meetings on that, and I'm just so pleased that we accomplished something really important in October with adoption of that. And again, having that done and adopted informed these other puzzle pieces that all fit together and form really the, the citywide vision for growth in the future. So next slide. So you'll see the process timeline here. I just want to remind everyone, we're, we're moving really fast. We're getting a lot done. So appreciate everyone's hard work. We started this process a few years ago, but like, like most of the world, we took a pause, especially because of COVID, to allow time for this to be re-scoped. We added additional components. This streetscape plan that you're seeing was an added component and a really important component, as I think you'll see tonight. We also added a detailed infrastructure assessment, which will come to you, and a financing plan that will come to you as part of the specific plan. Again, really important components that we added. And since we relaunched it, we've been going really fast. We have a lot of work to do. Next year, when the plans are released, we have a voluminous program EIR coming to comply with CEQA. We're actually releasing the notice of preparation for that tomorrow officially. So we invite all of our partner agencies and organizations to help us scope that general plan, and we'll be having a scoping meeting, again, primarily for those agencies and organizations that have input on the EIR on December 16th. And we're moving really fast, and we've gotten great feedback. Especially with regard to, again, the vision, the guiding principles, update of land use densities and heights to fulfill the city's vision for the future. So we're on track here to bring it back for you, as the City Manager said, next fall, early fall. You know, less than a year away, but we still have a lot of work to do, and we hope to get really good feedback for you tonight to finalize that. I think that concludes my part of the presentation, and now I will turn it over to Jacob and Jim from WRT to finish it out.
Again, Darcy, this is the mayor. One second. Can we make sure, City Clerk, that everyone's microphones are off? Thank you.
And again, we'd love to hold questions to the end. I know you might have some burning questions, but I think like the plan, it's really good to go kind of cover to cover and let us finish our presentation, and then we have ample time for any questions at the end of the presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jacob and Jim.
Great. Thank you, Darcy. This is Jim Stickley, Principal with WRT, and I want to introduce Jake Tobias, who's the Project Manager for the Streetscape Plan, and also Punam Narke, who is the Project Manager for the specific plan, which, as Darcy said, we're doing simultaneous to this. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, and Commissioner Joe and Commission for this opportunity. We are really excited about this. And I think what's important to us about the way Darcy framed this is that all of these plans that are happening right now are integrated. And it's, it's a unique situation. That doesn't always happen. So the land use changes that are being made within the general plan within the downtown specific plan can be complemented by these public space improvements. You're going to have, you know, some changes in land use mix and density. And these streets and these public spaces will be what accommodate the civic life that starts to spring out of those changes. And of course, building on what you already have, working on Broadway, as Darcy said. I also want to recognize that we, we didn't do this alone. So in addition to Mentor Harnish, who is leading the overall effort for the general plan within which these two plans are nested. We've been working with Terry Bottomley, who's made a great contribution in the thinking behind this plan, but also Kittleson Transportation Planners, because you know, this gets down to the feet and inches of lane widths and bike widths and sidewalk widths. It gets very technical. And Kittleson has been really good in working with us to, to work out those solutions. So we're going to jump into this plan. Let's go to the next slide. What's really important here is, as Darcy said, I don't want to repeat too much of what Tom and Darcy have, have already said, but these two streets, El Camino Real and Broadway, are the, really the threads that connect the downtown together and connected to the new station area. And so they're really critical to the success of downtown. These plans get into some very specific changes of geometry, numbers of lanes, parking configurations, significant improvement of bicycle facilities, and, you know, multimodal function. How does transit work more seamlessly? And how do we create more social space in sidewalks? And then, how do we improve the green infrastructure? How do we just make these corridors greener and more pleasant? And so I think there's a lot of improvement we can do to that. And then the design character, as Darcy said, we're going to get into pavement materials, or I think it was actually Tom that was describing this. Pavement materials and furnishings and lighting and planting and wayfinding and potentially public art. So there's a lot of tools for us to use. And, you know, we can orchestrate all those to really create a unique environment. And the next slide. So this image here of Boulevard Saint Germain sort of became a little, you know, North Star for us. We went through a bunch of these precedent images, and, but what this one captured is just this sensibility, you know, this place that you really are attracted to because of the vibrancy, because of the activities and the activated storefronts and the kiosks and the flower shops. The fact that it's mixed modes, mixed circulation. It's not dominated by cars, but you see people. We won't see horses so much, but we will see bicycles and, and buses. And, you know, the cars will be there still, but it'll be in balance with these other modes. So that's, I think, the kind of environment that, that we'd like to aspire to. And it's shady, and it's pleasant. It's green. And the lighting is good, and at nighttime, it feels safe and, and, and warm and twinkly, right? So it's, it's just this really compelling place to be. So we have listed on the right all the various kinds of improvements. I'm not going to read through all those. Jake is going to go into those in a lot more detail. But the last point I wanted to make is that, you know, Darcy is right. Broadway is your front porch, and in a lot of ways, it's working pretty well. It's got a great character. And so I think that is more of a fine tuning undertaking. We're trying to create some more sidewalk width. But there's a lot there that works. There's a lot of great work that's been done already on the streetscape on Broadway. But there, you know, there still are improvements we can make. El Camino Real is the bigger challenge. You know, it's, it's a bear, and it's a real workhorse, and there's a lot of throughput. And it's, it's more difficult to make that a human environment. But to us, it's also this enormous opportunity to transform the corridor. And we're, we're actually really excited about some of the ways that we can do that. And we want to get into some of, of the detail of, of how that can be done. So I'm going to turn it over to Jake to walk us through that.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you. City Council and Planning Commission, it's nice to meet you in this virtual way. So I will just dive into, into the detail. We're going to look at overview of the project and then function, the streetscape function, sort of the technical side of things, and then finally the character and the place making aspects. So broadly, on the two streets, starting with Broadway, just, just the high level changes that we're proposing are widening sidewalks, replacing the angled parking with parallel parking. The improvement and replacement of the sidewalk pavement with enhanced pavement. The retention of the existing palm trees. We'll get into that in a little bit. Adding street trees. Replacing the overhead cobra head type fixtures with pedestrian level pole mounted light fixtures. And then new street furnishings throughout the corridor. For El Camino Real, just starting with the, the, the most visionary aspect is ultimately reduction in the number of travel lanes from six to four, or from three in each direction to two in each direction, where, of course, supported by Caltrans. Addition of, of bicycle lanes. Adding pedestrian safety enhancements. Sidewalk widening, additional tree planting, planted medians, green infrastructure, and then the additional character enhancements, including pavement furnishings and lighting. Before getting into the detail, just to, to take an overall view of these character zones that we've identified. And again, I'll reiterate that this, as Jim said, this is a unique or unusual opportunity to really coordinate this streetscape plan with the work of the specific plan. So these zones that we've identified really very closely relate to the land use zones and the character zones that are described by the specific plan. And in particular, I'll just mention a few important points here. This, what we're calling interactive urban zone is primarily the Broadway zone, and it's just the most active street frontages, the commercial core, but also just a point. But also just to point out that that extends to the frontage road along El Camino Real. And really we want to kind of grab that zone, which is already functioning that way largely. But to really tie it together in terms of the sort of mental map that people develop of the area. On the second point is that along El Camino Real, there's, there's in addition to the frontage road, there's two zones really related to land uses. The, what we're calling the promenade is the more active ground floor retail zone. And then the parkway zone is where there's less activity on the ground floor. It's more residential in terms of the land use. And then there's even a little piece of Broadway, which is also similarly residential on the southern end of Broadway. And finally, just taking a look at the alley and, and seeing if there's a way to improve the sense of safety and character of the alley. So just running through those character images, the promenade, again, the, the most active part of Broadway, wide sidewalks and
El Camino Real.
I'm sorry, oh, thank you, El Camino Real. It tends to be the southern half with wider sidewalks and active frontages and large trees and, and that, and that real boulevard type of character. The interactive urban is more intimate in scale. Sidewalk dining, maybe a little bit greener, finer textures of materials like the brick paving. Then the, what we're calling the parkway is where there's less of an active ground floor frontage. So more opportunity for planting, just a quieter street. And then finally, just what can we do with the alley to both beautify it, make it feel safe? Less, less of a distraction from all the great improvements to the other streets, both Broadway and El Camino Real. Jumping into the function and the sort of technical design changes, starting with Broadway here, the existing conditions, as you are well aware, has this diagonal parking and really a very narrow sidewalk, went too narrow generally to support the kind of activities that you want there, sidewalk dining, et cetera. The other important thing to point out is that this parallel parking really is, is substandard. And I'm sure you've all felt that when you're driving on Broadway, trying to park, trying to get in and out of parking spaces or getting around people who are getting in and out of parking spaces. It's all just a little bit too tight for comfort and for safety. It's not safe for bicyclists either. So there's a lot of reasons to move toward parallel parking on Broadway. And that change not only improves the safety and function of the roadway, but allows us to go to a, a pretty generous 13 foot wide sidewalk on both sides. A plan view showing the character, and I think these plan views are important because it really emphasized the greening of the street. We talk about all of the hardscape improvements, the beautiful pavement and light fixtures and furnishings. But when you look at these plans, you realize that one of the biggest changes that, that the streetscape plan proposes is just adding a lot of green, both street trees and also on the ground plane in the form of stormwater infiltration planting, rain gardens, and also just general greening, planting. Just another view, this starts to talk about a little bit more about the character, but that will be at the, towards the end of the presentation. But you can see that on Broadway, it's important to think of the sidewalk paving as being enhanced, improved as well as all of the functional dimensional changes. An eye level view, one thing worth mentioning is that the, we understand that the existing planters that the palm trees are planted in are, are a little too small now for these trees as they've grown. So one proposal is to enlarge those planters. Moving to El Camino Real, as Jim said, this is where Broadway seems simple compared to El Camino Real. So this slide talks about, and we're not intending this slide to, 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 these images are too small to look at the detail. But broadly, we've looked at, at El Camino Real in two zones. The southernmost zone with the frontage road. That's the four blocks between Chadburn and Taylor. And then the northern, two thirds of the study area really don't have the frontage road. So we had to consider those two things separately. And then we considered this phasing strategy. And one of the constraints that we, we, we held ourselves to was the notion that anything built new in phase one would remain through the final vision. And that was a pretty challenging puzzle to solve. I won't get into all the detail, but the point of these diagrams is to illustrate that the new medians basically in phase one would remain in place through the final vision. And none of the phase one work would preclude anything hap- happening in the final vision. So getting into some detail, this is the southern zone with the frontage road. And I'll just move quickly from left to right, describing the improvements. The first thing you would notice is that the frontage road gets narrower and the parallel parking on the east side of the frontage road is removed. And that is, so that is essentially the way that we can get a bicycle facility on the southbound side of El Camino Real. The bicycle facility then is the next thing to, to notice. It's a fairly minimal bike lane for this type of street and the, the speeds and volumes of automobiles that you experience. It's a five foot bike lane with a three foot buffer.
Or for this phase, right?
For this phase, correct, exactly. So we're sort of squeezing it in. And then moving again to the, to the right. Just one thing to note is all of these travel lanes do meet Caltrans standards, but they are Caltrans minimums. And then one really important thing that we, we discussed with, with staff at length is the importance of keeping the median refuge or adding a median refuge to the existing medians to provide the pedestrian safety. So we've, we talk a lot about the bike facility, but I think it's really important to emphasize that, that as big a change as bike facilities here is going to be increased pedestrian safety. So that's why the median is as wide as it is. And that was another constraint to kind of fitting everything in. And then finally, moving to the right hand side of the, of the section. Again, squeezing in a pretty minimal bike facility. And then maintaining the parking, the parallel parking on the northbound side. We are calling this a multi-use curb lane, and I think that's important to explain. Calling this a parking lane is, it's true, there will be parking. But really to begin to think of this curb lane as a place where a lot of different functions can happen, including parklets. And so, you know, as there are active frontages developed on the east side, there may be the, the desire to put parklets there. There may be drop off zones, deliveries, loading areas, micro mobility hubs. So if there are bike share stations or, or scooter parking docking stations, those might go in this multi-use curb lane. And then of course, the parking as well. But we're trying to shift that language a little bit, little by little, to not just think of it as, as serving drivers only.
Jake, do you want to mention the discontinuity with the A T P at this point?
Well, that's the next slide, so I just advanced.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Yep. So here's the final vision. What, what happens when you remove the third travel lane is is suddenly really you, you, you can, you can, you can get it all. So again, moving from, from left to right, that sort of minimal bike lane in phase one becomes a a wonderful wide separated bike, bikeway with additional greening, room for green infrastructure in a tent and a wide 10 foot median. Then you have your two 12 foot travel lanes, the same median with a pedestrian refuge. And then moving to the right, we're showing in this case, a, we're continuing to have a buffered bike lane. This time it's a 12 foot wide facility, basically, six foot of buffer and six foot of bike lane. But we, we are proposing in this four block segment of El Camino Real to, to keep that multi-use curb lane against the curb. This is different from what your A T P shows. And we understand that that was recently adopted. But we wanted to bring it up as a discussion point tonight. There are trade offs. And it's, it's sort of a hot topic in transportation planning. Where does a parking protected bike lane make sense versus where does that multi-use curb lane really create friction and potential conflict with a, with a bike lane? And so what we're proposing is that if these ground floor uses on the east side of El Camino Real are really active, that again, all of those uses that we described and just described earlier in the multi-use curb lane. And even the parking, just the frequency of people getting in and out of cars to, to go to ground floor retail. There may be enough activity there that we want to have close to the curb that it warrants reconsidering the idea of a, of a parking protected bike lane here. So that's, that's, that is a, an inconsistency again, and definitely something we want to hear your input on tonight. Anything else on that, Jim?
No, I don't think so, Jake.
Okay, thanks. Just looking at this in plan, again, just noticing.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, just one thing. I wanted to be clear, if you could just click back once, that the left turn pocket in the median in both directions is, you know, is maintained throughout the length of El Camino Real. So you can see the 10 foot left hand turn lane looking in one direction. And so that's, that still exists as part of the median design.
Right, you can see that here. On the plan view, just starts to show a little bit more, a couple of things to point out. One is the reconfiguration of the way that the frontage road is accessed, which really improves pedestrian safety on, on these, at these intersections and provides a, a large space really for, for plaza like spaces, including a really large robust space for a bus stop, a bus shelter and so on, on the corners where that exists. And really shortening the crossing distance as much as possible, even in phase one here. The other thing, of course, to point out is just the street trees, as I mentioned earlier, that the medians, you know, we understand now that a lot of the trees in the medians are in pretty poor health. And the replacement of the median not only gives us the opportunity for the pedestrian refuges, but just really a much greener street already with the medians. Then looking at phase two, you can see how much even more the pedestrian crossings are shortened. The, the, in this case, the part, the bike lane on the outside of the parking or multi, I have to train myself still, the multi-use curb lane allows for this reduction in the pedestrian crossing with these little extra refuge islands. So you can really see how, how safe this crossing could become. Another thing really worth mentioning in terms of the design of El Camino Real, especially here on the southern part, is the, is the need more broadly to provide easy access to Broadway. So the fact that these are just very easy to cross, very visible, very legible crossings would help with the problem of Broadway sort of maybe being a little bit hard to find right now. And so we can get more at, at wayfinding and so on, but just intrinsic in the design is this sense that you really should be cross, it should be very easy to cross El Camino Real.
One other thing, Jake, is the, the way that the transit stops, the bus stops are, are separated from the bike lane. So this is through the Copenhagen style. The bike lane goes behind the bus shelters. It's removing that conflict for when a bus pulls over. It simply pulls over in the lane and the bikes continue to flow through just as, you know, just where they are on, on the bike lane. And then there are little pedestrian crossings from the sidewalk to the, the, the bus stop median. But those are, you know, generously spaced, plenty of room for waiting, plenty of room for a nice sized shelter and so forth.
Right. As Jim mentioned earlier, I don't want to go into all of the detail, but we really did work closely with Kiddleson on a lot of these details down to whether the bus stop should be nearside bus stops or farside bus stops. If there are transportation geeks among you, we can certainly go into, into a lot of detail about all the thought around, around the, the technical details of how all this oper- how all this functions. Just an aerial perspective for those who have more trouble with plan view. And then some, some eye level views. So here, this is again, the frontage road area and just maintaining and enhancing the, the retail environment along that, that frontage, which is already operating quite nicely. You know, one thing worth mentioning is that in any of these plans and any of these future conditions, we still see parklets potentially playing an important role to extend the usable sidewalk zone. So that is not at all precluded in any of these plans. So you could imagine even more sidewalk seating in the form of parklets. And then just the, the added greening and, and opportunities associated with those large curb extensions where currently the, the frontage road access cuts through here. Just moving out towards the street so that you can see the sort of relationship with all of the modes that we're talking about. The pedestrian zone, bike zone, bus stops and, and transit sort of in the street and then cars. And then with the pedestrian refuges that you can see, just really balancing all of these modes. And also the relationship between sort of this transportation design and placemaking, I think, comes across in this view. That it all is one and the same, that the transit and transportation and multimodal mobility design is not an afterthought, but it really is integrated with the, the look and the feel and the, and the sense of place. Okay, moving on to the northern two thirds of the, of the corridor. This was challenging and the decision that the, what, what, what came out of our studies is that if you maintain the six lanes of six travel lanes plus the median refuge, which was critical and the turn lane. Within that, the only way to provide a bicycle facility in this northern non-frontage road zone is to remove the on-street parking. And if you do so, that's an eight foot space and you can get a five foot bike lane with a three foot buffer. What you do still get here and it comes, well, it, it'll come louder and clearer in the plan is you do get a lot of pedestrian enhancement, especially with the median refuge. But of course, if we move to two lanes in each direction, it just opens up. You can pretty much have it all here. And in this case, where there isn't as active a ground floor environment, the parking protected bike lane really would work well here. So we fully support that for, you know, two thirds of El Camino Real. This is consistent with what the A T P describes. You also notice that the sidewalks get wider and with the addition or with the removal, reduction in, in the automobile travelings, now you have the opportunity for street trees and planting. And really, this would begin to look like those precedent images of the parkway that I showed earlier. In the plan view, you can see phase one is a fairly limited improvement. But there is the additional planting in the medians, the median refuge, the bike lane. And then phase two, suddenly a major transfer day, transformation of, of the corridor with room for very generous bus stops, a lot more greening, whether this is stormwater or otherwise, just that the, the sense of greening of the street. Now you can have street trees and, and the reduction. uh and, and the reduction of the pedestrian crossings. The, what you get is significant, we think, with uh, with the reduction in that third travel lane in each direction. Again, just an aerial perspective and an eye level view. Um, and then just an overall view, which is included in the plan of the whole entire study area. We couldn't even fit it on one image. It's, it's these two um, two views uh with, which match in on the, on the left here. I think the reason that this is powerful, at least when you're looking at it at this scale, is just to see again how much green here is, is here. And you know, again, we focus on a lot of the details and materials. Um, but just the impact of, of just planting more trees and providing more green at the ground plane. All that green infrastructure is, is so significant. And then just to show how sort of both Broadway and El Camino Real work together. Took the kind of um downtown core zone that begins to, to get formed here. And again, it's, it's largely uh expressed in the, in the green as well as all the other elements. So moving to the character giving uh the, 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 the non-technical side, but the design side, the sort of uh place making. We included this kind of fun diagram in the, in the plan document. Um, that sort of um identifies where we think your downtown fits within a range of uh of sort of architectural and design styles. You know, on one end of the spectrum, on the left, we could do a historic, sort of historic um type of design where it looks like everything looks turn of the century, turn of the last century, I should say, Victorian uh design. And the far right, we could be looking at the most avant-garde um, uh current and futuristic design. We looked carefully at the existing condition and the existing character of your downtown and even the surrounding residential neighborhoods. And um, and we and also staff really agreed that Millbrae Falls somewhere in the middle, uh somewhere between the traditional and contemporary. And so for Broadway and the frontage road area, we're proposing a more traditional uh approach. And then El Camino Real could be more contemporary. How that gets expressed in terms of furnishings and pavement is that the traditional zones, Broadway and the, and the frontage road would have furnishings that are not historical per se, but the forms and the materials and the colors sort of work with that historical style, but also need to be able to work with a modern style. There's already a number of modernist buildings on Broadway and on El Camino Real. Um, and so this, this, all the furnishings in those zones need to work with both modern and traditional buildings. Whereas the rest of El Camino Real, really, we felt could move more towards contemporary um uh approach. Just one small thing to point out is that the tree grate we're showing for El Camino Real has been approved as a city standard tree grate. Uh, we're suggesting that potentially the Broadway and the frontage road could have a more, even more traditional looking tree grate. So that's a, that's a small detail, but it is a way that we want. Really, it just is an example of how we're proposing that the core downtown is distinct from the rest of the city. It feels a little bit different uh when, and, and you kind of know you're there. In terms of pavement, same idea that the Broadway and frontage road zone, the kind of core commercial zone of your downtown has brick paving. Um, it maintains the brick crosswalks. Uh, it's a smaller scale, finer, finer scale, higher level of craft and detail. And then for the promenade and parkway zones, basically the rest of El Camino Real, it would be cast in place pavement, probably with a nice color to it. Uh, you know, well, well crafted, but a much sort of larger scale, less refined with some areas and opportunities for um, for features and, and um you know, special moments in the pavement that might respond to things that are happening along the street. The lighting, uh, we understand that on Broadway, you recently installed a prototype and sort of a demonstration or uh pilot of a light fixtures. So that's what we would propose for that. And again, removing all of the Cobra head style fixtures and lighting the street um exclusively with these more pedestrian level fixtures that are spaced more closely together and really add to the character of the street as you look down the street. Whereas El Camino Real could have more of a contemporary fixture. The one on the far right has already been approved as a standard for the city. And again, it would be fine if El Camino Real had fixtures and furnishings that you found elsewhere in the city. Um, it would also be fine if there were opportunities for other things, especially these larger scale fixtures that, that might really be appropriate for El Camino Real as El Camino Real is such a large street. But again, distinguishing Broadway and the frontage road from El Camino Real and even the rest of the city. Um, getting towards the end here, the planting concept follows very closely from those character zones. I think just a couple of things worth pointing out is that um, we are advocating for the retention of the palm trees. They um really serve an important function. They not only are very iconic and identifiable features of your downtown, making your downtown uh, you know, unique and identifiable. They're just a very strong place making feature. But they also are a very strong wayfinding feature. Again, sort of referring to this concern that Broadway is a little bit hard to find. Um, these palm trees really can be seen from, from, at least from El Camino Real as you look, as you look uh down the cross streets. And even they already uh jump over to El Camino Real at two intersections. And so we think this really reinforces that sense of this downtown core. And then the other thing to mention is just the you know, consistency of the trees with the notion that there's two different zones on um El Camino Real. And then that the median could be a really special opportunity for a, a very different kind of more uh large and um, sort of uh, less formal arrangement of large specimen trees that could give it, give the street a lot of unique character. So what are those trees? The canopy tree, again, for the promenade zone would be a very high canopy. Just, I think it's almost enough to hearken to that earlier image of the Boulevard Saint Germain or the Champs Élysées. Uh, that's, that's kind of the sense that we're, we're trying to convey here. Where we have more um residential land use in the, in the parkway zones. Um, similarly, it would be a large tree, but less grand. And in fact, with a lower canopy that might provide a little bit more privacy to residential uh second stories and above. Then on Broadway, I'm uh really looking for the opportunity for a consistent um, you know, street trees along there. There's very few trees now. And these would be smaller trees that would give character with um fall color or, or flowers in the spring. And then again, just reiterating this marker tree that these, these palm trees are really um a great asset for the town, for the city now. And we would uh want to retain those. Looking at green infrastructure really briefly, just that there's sort of two areas that we were emphasizing in terms of green infrastructure. Often people really are focusing on stormwater treatment. Um, which, which obviously this plan um yeah promotes, but also looking at tree health and the importance really of providing trees with adequate soil. And this is sort of an infrastructural feat aspect in the sense that nobody really sees it. It's all this sort of underground stuff, but the, the soil and providing the chance for these urban trees to grow and grow big and live long is not a simple task. You can't, it's, it's sort of the fact is you can't just put a tree in a small hole in the ground and expect it to do well. So just emphasizing that there's a lot of different um ways of providing trees with the soil they need. I mentioned earlier, uh, when we were looking at the perspective of El Camino Real, that the sort of mobility is integral with the character of the street and it's not an afterthought. So just looking for ways to make transit stops uh really places that people want to be. And how do we begin to incorporate these other micro mobility? Um, um, stations and hubs and, and docking stations and, and the like. The potential for micro mobility is, is clear as a solution to the so-called last mile problem. And since you're right near, you know, the whole uh trying to get people to Bard and from Bard uh to their destinations, I think we think micro mobility has an important role in um, in the downtown. And then finally, wayfinding and public art. Uh, you do have a, a excellent wayfinding program already uh with various types of signage. And I, I did want to emphasize that, that just as part of the streetscape design, just continuing that wayfinding program is going to be really important. What we discussed with staff um was, was the, the question of gateways. And um what this plan is proposing out of those conversations is to really use public art as, as an opportunity for um sort of creating those moments of entry into the town, whether it's on the north and southern ends or whether it's at critical intersections within sort of bracketing the downtown itself, the, the core downtown area, but just to look at um opportunities for public art really to uh enhance the sense of a gateway. You know, one thing that we would like to see in any of these types of streetscapes is that it's all of these elements that create the sense of arrival. The street trees, the paving, the furnishings, the lighting, um, the transit design, multimodal design, all of these things are creating the place and a gateway shouldn't be necessary to know you've arrived. And so in this case, um, it's less about, about gateway and more about how do we just enhance that sense of arrival with some special feature like art. That concludes my presentation. Again, um, some of the things we'd like you to focus on, but certainly not an exhaustive list here. Uh, just the, the design concepts overall, of course, the question of phasing and um, I think just our plan needs to be sensitive to the reality that, that Cal, this is that El Camino Real is a state highway and Caltrans ultimately does have the um, the jurisdiction here, but that there is an ongoing conversation that's begun with not only uh Millbrae, but other cities up and down the corridor to revisit the question of whether the six lanes is necessary. So that's, that's an ongoing conversation. Um, but I think that uh we're, we're, we, we just want to have some clarity about council and, and the planning commission's support for, for pushing that agenda frankly with, with Caltrans. Um, the bicycle facility and just in particular, the one question of separated bikeways versus uh buffered bike wi, bike lane on the southern four blocks of the, of the project area. And then just generally whether um we're on the right track with planting and green infrastructure. Jim or Darcy, did I leave anything out?
No, that was great. I think we're ready to hand it back to the mayor to um take us through questions and answers, followed by public comments and then the discussion and feedback portion.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, Community Director Smith and to Mr. Tobias, Mr. Stickley. I was very uncomfortable approving our active transportation plan, but Darcy promised us your work. And I'm going to say, wow. Um, there might be a few things I would tweak, but that's an amazing, amazing job you have all done. Um, I will remind the public there that the city just south of us, Burlingame, has, has been living with four lanes, two lanes each direction and have just gone through a big design process with Caltrans to uh make some changes with their, their beloved eucalyptus trees, but still maintaining two street, two lanes in either direction. So this is not impossible. And before I hand it off to council and then to planning commission and then the public, um, could you please remind the people of Millbrae just how wide our El Camino is and that it is the widest in its entire length, which gives us amazing opportunities. So they hear it from somebody other than me.
I'm sorry, you, you want me to?
The width of El Camino.
I'll have to, I have to go back to that slide. We do have that dimension here. Bear with me.
And while you're looking at it, I will also tell the public that at least um I have been bringing up at the City and Council Association of Governments the need for regional transportation to look at why we have so much cut-through traffic in Millbrae, whether it's between two eighty and one oh one or three eighty and Millbrae Avenue. So that is another ongoing process to reduce traffic flow on El Camino Real, which also fits nicely into going to, how do you put it? The, the new term, two lanes each direction plus, anyway, a four lane instead of a six lane, or really nine lanes at Millbrae Avenue.
Right. So where there's no, for, just to answer the question, where there's no frontage road, it's a hundred and twenty foot right of way. Um, if this isn't too editorial, uh, I swim in a, a one hundred foot long swimming pool and that's a challenging distance to swim across. I give you a sense of what a hundred and twenty feet is. Uh, pardon my editorial comment there. Uh, and then where there is the frontage road, the public right of way is a hundred and fifty-nine feet wide.
Excellent. Thank you. City council, I'm sure there are some questions and comments. I don't see all of your pictures with the way the screen is set up. If you could raise your hands or city clerk, if you see a council member, let me know. Right now I'm not seeing anyone. I can't believe that. Mr. Holliver, please go ahead.
Hey, thank you. Um, thanks everyone uh for the team, from the team for working on this. It's a lot of great work, a lot of great ideas and visions and put into this. Um, I have several questions and uh comments, feedback on the plan and if you want that all now. Um, but I'll go through it. Um, first of all, this is, this isn't really directly related to the plan, but it was alluded to in the plan, the uh maybe more of a question for our staff. Uh, the uh parklets uh for outdoor seating, outdoor dining um that we have, um, that was originally uh allowed as sort of a temporary measure for um because of COVID and because indoor dining was closed. Um, I, I, I think a lot of people do like the parklets, but I think it would be useful to have some type of a a policy going forward as to, you know, how long are they going to stay there? Um, is it going to be permanent? Is it going to be um something that's just sort of an amenity given to businesses? Will they have to pay? Will they need to pay for a permit? Um, who will be allowed to have them, to keep them or not? Um, because I think uh, uh, we've been sort of working in a sort of indefinite timeline under COVID so far. Um, but I think going forward, it'd be useful to have a policy in place. Um, uh, in terms of the Broadway um configuration, moving to parallel parking, do you know about how many spaces would be reduced by doing that? And if so, would they be replaced and where would they be replaced?
Okay, I, I can, I can take a shot at that and, and any of the consultants step in. Going from uh diagonal parking to parallel parking, we'll lose about twenty percent of the parking spaces. Um, and then the idea is to, you know, as we implement this, um, we will discuss implementation of paid parking, paid parking meters, and we have an opportunity to develop um parking garage, structured parking on the property and assets the city already owns uh off of Broadway, between Broadway and El Camino and between Broadway and Magnolia. So that's where we make up the parking space.
Okay. Um, that, that, I'm in terms of the different um sort of sections of El Camino Real. Um, mentioned that the promenade. which is I think sort of the main El Camino quarter, says that it would end at Millbrae Avenue. Why is it not extended to Murchison and can it be extended to Murchison to the city boundary?
Yes, I can answer that question. There is currently a plan that Caltrans is working on that includes that block south of Millbrae Avenue. And so, and so we didn't we didn't get into designing that particular block. My understanding is that it does maintain the, I believe it maintains the six lanes and and I think that there's really some some heavy demand from a transportation point of view on that particular block. So.
Councilman, can I interrupt on that? Because I've attended the workshops that Burlingame has had. Actually, the Caltrans staff had no idea what our one block looked like. They thought we were two lanes there because I made a bunch of pedestrian improvements. And Councilman Holliver, I think it should go to Murchison and Cal Burlingame does not get to design what Millbrae looks like.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's an excellent point.
I would recommend including extending that to Murchison and you know, we're going to have to talk to Caltrans anyways, regardless of, you know, implementing really any aspect of this plan. So we might as well say that we want to, you know, this is the vision for El Camino, even if it's just the phase one and not the phase two to potentially extend that to Murchison and at least keep that dialogue open and not close.
And and just to follow up, when I spoke with Caltrans at these workshops for Burlingame, they said that the only thing they were planning on doing in the Millbrae portion was adding more disability accessibility corners, which I thought we had already done, but that's the only thing they had at that time.
Thank you for that. I know part of that area is already built out in terms of the 88 South Broadway development. With the Pinadera development on the other side, but you know, potentially that Chase Bank, maybe it could be redeveloped at some point into a of a high-rise structure and we could create a similar type of active furniture that would be beneficial to the city. I do like the idea and I'm glad that you did include the phasing for El Camino Phase One and Phase Two. Because I think there is, you know, sort of a lot up in the air in terms of what Caltrans will approve, when they will approve it and also what, you know, the budget is for this project and how it's going to be paid for. So I do like having the option of Phase One, funding is limited and if Caltrans does not promptly approve the two lane concepts. I think in terms of the El Camino frontage, and you mentioned this in the presentation, the entrance and the exit to the frontage is redesigned. It does, and it does, I think, improve the pedestrian flow in terms of having the bulbouts, but I think it creates a bit of an awkward entrance and exit and potentially is a little bit disruptive in terms of traffic flows. I think maybe one option to consider, instead of those bulbouts being quite as large as maybe it have a pedestrian island there to allow for a little bit easier incoming and outgoing flow of traffic into frontages. Something to look at. The, I guess, El Camino northbound, six-foot bike buffer that seems like a bit of kind of a dead space. I think a bike buffer is helpful, but does it necessarily have to be that wide? Could that space be better used either by making sidewalks a little bit wider, maybe make median a little bit wider. But I don't think at this point it it's necessarily the best use of that much space, especially the bike lane itself is only five feet wide. I don't know why the buffer would have to be six feet wide. You mentioned the bus stops on El Camino and in this design, does the bike, sorry, do the buses stop in the traffic lane or do they have a sort of an area with a lane that they can pull into to stay out of the way of traffic?
In the ultimate fine, second phase final vision, they would stop just in the in the travel lane.
Okay, I'm a little concerned about that. I know, for example, in Burlingame with their current two-lane configuration, they don't have an area for buses to pull out and oftentimes a bus will stop and then a car behind that that bus will swerve into the other lane to get out of the way. So we may want to consider having kind of a pullout area for the buses so that they're not blocking traffic when they stop. I don't think at this point in time I would support the elimination of parking in the northern section of El Camino Real for the Phase One. I think that would be very harmful to the businesses in that area and not having any parking on El Camino. So I don't know if maybe you mentioned it's a challenge in terms of the width, but perhaps maybe the traffic lanes could be reduced from 12 feet to 11 feet or something like that and be able to create a small bike lane and preserve the parking. But at this point in time, I would not support that Phase One for the northern section of El Camino.
Jake, why don't you flip to that? Because I think it's important to show just how constrained that area is. Yeah, I think the way Jake characterized it when he presented it is it's really a choice between the bike lanes and and the parking lane, you know, they're roughly the the same dimensional requirements. And believe us, we looked at this every way possible. You know, getting a foot here and a foot there isn't going to get you there. It it needs a big move. And I think where that pushed us is to really try to leapfrog to Phase Two in this northern section. And in a way that makes sense because as you get further south towards Millbrae Avenue, the traffic volumes increase. So if you were to start with a reduction in lanes, you know, this would be a logical segment, even if you had to do the southern portion in in two phases. So that's something to maybe think about also.
Yeah, that makes sense. If we are going to do this improvement for northern El Camino, I think maybe that would be an area to jump straight to Phase Two, but I think if we had a choice between the bike lane parking, I think I would be inclined to maintain the parking at this time. Just because that's, you know, several blocks of an important frontage where there would be no parking at all and not really much parking in the side streets either. That's about it. Oh, one other comment. When we approved the developments near the transit center, we also approved a median fencing along the median to prevent jaywalking between Millbrae Avenue and Victoria. And I think the vision is not, you know, a cheapo chain link fence, but something that's decorative, that can be have plants, vines around it, foliage around it. So I think it may be worth at least mentioning that at some point in the plan, you know, within three years of now, four of the five council members will be termed out and don't want that to be something that's dropped on the wayside, especially since it's funded by the developers. And then I think just sort of the the big question, maybe it's not part of this plan, but at some point we're going to need a funding plan and cost estimates for these projects to know what what we should prioritize, how we're going to do it and how we're going to pay for it. That's I think sort of the one big missing piece here. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Holliver. Can I build on what the councilman just brought up on the north end? I'm trying to run through my head right now what businesses are on their side. So if we're looking at the west side, which you might be calling the south side, some of those businesses have their own parking lots. So Sherman Williams, Kelly Moore, Kelly Paint Company, some of the restaurants, there's actually a little bit of parking in back. At Park and Park, there is a city-owned lot in the back there. But on the other side of the street, I know I get Japanese food from a restaurant that's in the bottom of a hotel. Maybe one of the ways to help with this transition, at least in planning, is what kind of parking could we identify for the merchants on either side? I tend to drive up onto the the drive-through at the hotel to pick up food during COVID. But, you know, to recognize that we do have businesses there through this transition, I would rather see us go with this right away. South San Francisco has received millions and millions of dollars recently in redoing their El Camino Real where their new city hall is going, which is also a very wide part of El Camino Real. So I don't know what they're doing right now, but it would be great to have this with a plan, but we might need a transition for our merchants and for our residents who shop there on that. But maybe if we could have a picture of just how many merchants, how many of the buildings are currently occupied and are actively working, you know, and how we might help them in that transition. And I am not seeing any other hands. I have a couple of quick things then while other council members may think, and then I'll bring on the planning commission. I had a question on your slide that showed our frontage road at 27 feet. And is that because it's going to retain the angled parking? Is it still going to maintain that little narrow planting strip? Which has a nice little green metallic fence and then some shrubs, but would that get any wider at all there? And here's the problem. If you look at the block between Hillcrest and La Cruz, where you've got La Colina and Fiddler's Green and a couple of other restaurants, it's thriving. But the Lock Company and some of the other retailers have mentioned to me how hard it is for customers to get in there with that. So how can we make that frontage road how great it's actually working right now, but it's not working so great for the retail stores? Because people have a hard time pulling into them quickly to pick up that new key or whatever you're getting at the locksmith as one example.
To answer your question.
Oh, and I should finish. If you try to, if you're you're going to pick up food from La Colina and you've parked down by the kitchen and you're walking up the street, you kind of have to weave your way through Fiddler's Green to get to La Colina the way the current parklet is designed. But I love the parklets. How can we just make them better?
Well, maybe if I can jump in here, because I think Councilmember Holliver had that question and you know, those those parklets are not permanent. They've always been envisioned to be temporary and, you know, depending on where we go with the coronavirus and Dr. Scott Morrow's direction and, you know, who knows with the Omicron variant. So we're still just kind of treading water at this point. We will address it. You know, probably the first quarter of this year, January, February, and then move on. But those are, the intention was always that those are interim. They're very temporary and those were just put in place under an emergency ordinance to help our restaurant survive. But I do see those going away, you know, within the next probably, you know, at least by the summertime. But this plan addresses, now that we know that works, now you know that the 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 restaurant operators like it, now that we know that people visiting and living in Millbrae like it, that's why the the widened sidewalks will accommodate outdoor dining and those amenities. So we actually won't need those types of parklets any longer.
Okay, I just would say that what is happening with Fiddler's Green and La Colina is terrific. It feels really good. It, the public is enjoying it. It's created such a lovely place and it's in the non-windy side of the street. So if we were to have outdoor dining, that's the one place during our windy season that makes sense. Okay, so that was just one of my questions. On the alley, my recommendation is you look into some shared garbage enclosures on that, how you do that with grease traps. This is my field, but I'm happy, look at the space allocation law, but I think the answer, we'll lose a few parking places, but we'll stop looking like garbage and then a place for illegal dumping along the alleys. I love your idea of public art. I also hope that you will consider green walls as a form of public art. And for WRT, I'm sure you're now aware that Millbrae is rather noisy and all of the green spacing can help absorb low frequency noise. So as much greenery as possible. With that, I see that I have a councilwoman up. I still have a few more questions. I'll loop back if they don't get asked. Go ahead, Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you please go back to the streetlight samples? Okay, yeah, you referenced that the one on the far right was approved for El Camino. I don't believe so.
I'll correct that. Darcy Smith, Community Development Director. We approved it for use at the recreation center. And it's similar to the one at the library. But I see you shaking your head, so that must mean you don't like it.
I don't like it. And we also, when we discussed it for the subcommittee, we decided, or at least I expressed I didn't like it for the recreation center either, but what was represented here was that that had been approved for El Camino.
That was erroneous. I apologize. But the one on the left is installed and so as the slide said, we'd like to get your feedback on whether this demonstration, streetlight, which was installed recently and that tree grate, you know, are consistent with your vision and your preference.
Yes, I do like that a lot and I do like the recommended upgrade of the tree grade that the consultant mentioned here, more of a circular one. I thought that was very nice. And if you could skip ahead a couple more, you had some what looked like bench lights. There, those guys, those are kind of cool. That would be very nice. I mean, that would really class it up a bit.
Councilman, just just because I'm taking, you're talking about the Ballard lights there on the on the photo on the top row, second from the left.
Well, you've got to the far left as I'm looking at it.
Yeah.
You have two different types there and there, but I I think that's, and they appear to be solar. I think those are really nice enhancements. I will say that hopefully when we are talking about improving Broadway, the, excuse me. There's never enough seating when we have the Art and Wine Festival. People are always looking to sit somewhere. So if you are expanding, whether it's the bench areas kind of around some of the bigger trees, that's great, but I would really love to see some of these benches here. And then, and the far left there at the corner there, I think, is the improved tree grate that the consultant recommended. I do like that better than the square one that's off to the far right. I think that's a little too. It just doesn't fit with the traditional that we're going for. I think the circular is a better fit, in my opinion. And then I didn't see a lot of where the lighting would be on the El Camino improvements. And that is exceptionally important because people don't feel safe at night. It's hard to see. We've always talked about kind of increasing the intensity of the lights on El Camino. So whichever way we go on that front, it's very important. I do love the idea of canopy trees more so in the downtown Broadway area and also on El Camino. That sounds great. What I don't like is a Phase One and Two. If we are dealing with Caltrans, I think we need to go for the gusto and just go right to Phase Two. Because if you're going to try to piecemeal this, it's going to take us forever. I think if we can get some sort of agreement and consensus here and really present a final, ready-to-go project, we stand a better chance of getting what we need as quickly as possible. And I do agree with Councilmember Holliver on the extension to Murchison. We just need to take control of that. It is our street. We just need to include that in whatever proposal we We just need to include that in whatever proposal we do, and I will say that the apartment complexes or the condos there, they did a lovely job of their little side streets in there. They they really put a lot into that. And we do need to emphasize what the developers are paying for there on El Camino, that barrier, which is supposed to be a lovely kind of metal fence that we discussed, so that needs to be a part of this plan as we move forward. We don't need to backtrack, they're paying for that. Yes, I do have a Christmas sweater on, somebody asked, okay. So, yes, and what I'm not seeing here, and we need to the moment we get some consensus here is we need to bring Samtrans into this, we need to have them buy in. We need them to do the bus shelters in a classic and nice way instead of cheap. A lot of the motions toward transit right now are really improved bus shelters with information signs on them. Things that make it easier, the more lit they are, the safer people feel. And the public art you presented, really cactuses? No. You know, the samples you had there, come on. It would be nice to have some samples that would actually work in our city here. None of the ones that were presented there, except for maybe the leaves, would even be suitable, but we we, I mean, we can go, I mean. I like art very much too, but I'm seeing a blob of red and then a blob of another color, and that doesn't mean anything to me. So if you're going to present things like this to us, I would really like to see some things that work well, and then you've got your bicycle stands there, but there's nothing interesting about that. You go to other cities, they, the bicycle stands or lock areas are are in of themselves. So we can incorporate some of that into this, that would be great. And I mentioned Samtrans because they have always talked about, and the city manager is probably going to kill me here, some sort of an express bus lane. And we do have the widest part of El Camino. So if we decide to go that way, we probably get more of a buy-in from Caltrans. Maybe even Samtrans, am I getting text for crossing that line there, but this is, we're really heading down the right path. I would love to see this done very quickly. If we can get our act together here and jump right to Phase Two, I think we stand a chance of getting funding and very quickly. So those are my comments as we start out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappen. Next week, the Culture Arts Advisory Committee is going to be bringing its work plan, which includes a citywide art plan, so your comments are well heard and would fit nicely if that work plan gets approved. Vice Mayor.
Sorry, wait, Madam Mayor, I don't think this is that, the Arts Committee can take a look at this, but this is not the kind of thing we want to really slow down. If art is presented here.
No, 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 it's it's, hopefully will be done quickly, it's a I don't want to steal their thunder, you're going to see it next week, but I hear you, art that's appropriate for our community, that enhances our community. And that will come back to council for concepts on that. I agree with you. I'm agreeing with you. Vice Mayor Leva.
Okay, very quickly, because I think that Councilmember Pappen took the words out of my mouth with the lighting, I think that's really important. And it is art, lighting can be an art, and it's also will will create the ambiance. And that's what we're trying to to achieve here, so I would like to really concentrate on that, maybe in a little, a deeper maybe a little deeper thought or presentation. So that is number one, it's not only just for ambiance, but for safety too, and we all know we've experienced a lot of horrific tragedies on El Camino, so if we can enhance that. I completely agree with Councilman Pappen with regards to skipping Stage Two. Let's do it right, let's do it right the first time, and let's get it done. And thirdly, I had mentioned in our briefing.
Councilmember, I want to skip Stage One and go to Two.
Yes.
Thank you, just wanted to be.
Sorry. And then also, I I I mentioned in the in the briefing, we have learned from the parklets that outdoor dining and outdoor activities work really well in Millbrae. And so I would like to see if some of the arts, so to speak, but also the downtown, we can create some spaces for some fun games, outdoor games like chess, checkers, foxy ball, or something of that sort, that we can have gathering points or a point of interest where people can come in and get a cup of coffee and hang out a little bit. So those are my comments, and I know that we have the Planning Commission to listen to too, so I'll stop there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Feng.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think it is great to see the multi-use curbling. I think that's particularly useful, and I think it is a very important and, you know, strategic change in how we use those valuable real estate, both on Broadway and on El Camino Real. So as far as the furnishing and the pavement, just this particular slide, I like the the second photo on the top row here, where this, you know, sort of oil-rub bronze with a bench-high lighting bollard. And that would work relatively well on Broadway, especially in the evening time, if we have evening activities. So that, you know, that bench and that bollard, that seems pretty good to me. If you can go back to the frontage road slide.
This one?
Yeah, that one, okay, so I think for the frontage road, it's currently, as you had it configured, is twenty-seven foot wide with a seven-foot sidewalk. I think it would be valuable to increase the sidewalk along that frontage road, as you know, some council member previously have mentioned, we've got some restaurant doing really well on that frontage road. We want to make sure that they continue to have those real estates for outdoor dining. You know, we can consider a similar parking strategy on the frontage road, just the same way as we have it on Broadway, as you have previously proposed in the previous slides. That way, we can increase the size of our sidewalk with potentially having a multi-use curbling there in that location. And then since that frontage road is one-way street anyway, with a similar parking strategy that you proposed on Broadway, I think that would work relatively well. I think that total, you get about, what, about thirty-eight feet there? How does it compare to Broadway, you know, half the Broadway, for example?
Yeah, we'd have to look at the one constraint would be getting a fire truck through there. You'd still probably need a a twenty-foot clear width. But we, but the point stands that obviously going to parallel parking would allow you to widen the sidewalk. I mean, I think that's your bigger point. I can't answer exactly how wide that street would need to be right now, but but I think the point is well taken that you're you're recommending considering going to parallel parking on the frontage road essentially, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. And also at the same time, we can, you know, consider having that multi-use curbling at that location with a wide sidewalk. And and, you know, at certain locations between the parking, you can put in those little islands where you can put landscaping, where a tree could be with a grate or and or benches in between those two. You know, there are some boba places there as well along the way, so possibly be useful for that purpose. And how, you know, I think Councilmember Holliver asked that question earlier. On the right-hand side, where sort of the northbound traffic, you've got this multi-use curving with the bike lane, and then there's a six-foot median, non-median, I mean, sort of a buffer there. I think there might be a better way to work that, you know, you you kind of, you know, touched on that a little bit at your presentation. But I think there might be some way for us to maximize that real estate a little bit. And also the good point about how how does bus work in that location? You said that it just stops at the right, far right-hand traffic?
Yeah, I actually need to refer to this plan. It's essentially the same on northbound and southbound, that the bus would stop in in the ultimate vision here, where we have two travel lanes in each direction. The bus would stop in the travel lane here, so. That's what.
And then there's a pedestrian island there for the, you know, for the bus, for the, for the riders to get on the bus.
Yeah, and I actually think that's why we have the six-foot bike buffer, because we need, I think that's the absolute minimum that we would need for that bus stop island. That's actually a little bit small. So I think that's where that dimension derived.
I see. I see. Yeah, we can do some more thinking there. But I do believe that having a bus island is important, so that at the same time, we can also have the bus shelter that Councilmember Pappen said a little earlier, we need to work with Samtrans on those, on those facilities, those are going to be valuable to the riders. Okay, and then would be so I I suppose there's a particular reason why the bike lane on the northbound is a little narrower than the one on the southbound?
That's right. It it comes down to this, the the way the the sort of median doesn't it doesn't exactly divide the the public, the right-of-way in half. It's it's just, it's asymmetrical condition essentially. So on on the southbound side, you have the opportunity to provide a much more gracious bike facility here than you do on the northbound side. It, to some degree, and I I don't want to misspeak, but to some degree, it has to do with the phasing concept that we wanted to provide new medians in Phase One with the pedestrian refuge. And then go to a Phase Two where you don't have to take out all of that, all those improvements in order to move the median around. It's possible. And I hesitate to promise, but it may be possible that if you really were to jump directly to the final vision, that constraint might go away in that the median, you could build a median in a different location. So we might, there may be a way to to rebalance this, if you were literally just to jump directly to the the final vision.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we can find sufficient funding to just kind of do this in in one time, so that to minimize the amount of construction that is required on El Camino Real, it's a major thoroughfare in our city as well now, so to to more, to shorten the amount of construction time would certainly be valuable there. So so we can think on that a little bit and see if we can find a way to optimize that. And let's see here. Yeah, in terms of the finishings that you see on Broadway, I think, you know, we can be a little bit more forward-thinking here, and as we transform our Broadway and El Camino Real, you know, we're likely to see taller buildings, you know, more glass panels and, you know, more aluminum, maybe more dark bronze palette design, so something that, the decision that we make today is likely to last for, you know, decades, if not generations, so I think we need to pick something that, you know, our next generation can be proud of. So, you know, that second picture right there looks pretty good to me, and then so you know, continue to bring forward more of these designs, so that we can make better decisions on what finishing we choose moving forward here. So that's all for now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Couple of questions and then back to Councilwoman Pappen. The city has been working on a plan for shuttle stops vaguely, as we wait for the TOD projects at the train station to get done. Does the existing layout for both Broadway and El Camino include places for the shuttle to stop and pick up people? Can they use the same Samtrans locations?
I'll, yeah, I don't see, I don't see why not, Mayor. I mean, yeah, I I.
Okay, given that that, at least with my one-on-one with the new Alexandria Corporation, they are also open to help us create a shuttle system, once we've got the density of passengers to bring people from our east side to our west side on that. So just keep in mind that we have a shuttle, and if if you could go to Slide Twenty-Five, back to that pedestrian median strip, this is just to let you know, see the one, not the long one where the bus would pull over, but the shorter one. We had that at Millbrae Avenue and El Camino Real, and Caltrans, right in front of Peter's Cafe, took it away. I can't remember the reasons why, maybe Caltrans doesn't like them, or maybe, who knows? But I will tell you, with somebody with a ninety-four-year-old, every time you have to step up to a curb is a fall risk. And maybe ninety-year-old pluses will no longer walk on El Camino Real. But I I heard Councilman Holliver talk about maybe more pedestrian islands. They can be very scary to step up on, unless it's got a ramp, I guess, but the yellow dots, my mom hates the yellow dots, she's scared to death of them, because when they're wet, she slips. So just keep that in mind in terms of mobility access.
Sorry to interrupt. I I believe that they would probably be required to have a ramp under ADA, I would think.
I I would hope so, and and it's, I know we've put the yellow dots all over town, and when I try to get my mom out for a walk, she she literally panics on those because she's, she's fallen. So just something to keep in mind with the surface.
Yeah, those are also required in California, but I think one thing we can put in the plan is there are concrete ones that are made out of precast concrete that might be less slippery than the plastic ones, and we can certainly recommend those. Those, those are controversial. They they serve part of the population really well, and they're a trade-off. They don't serve the whole population, but the but the bottom line is that they are required. But again, we can recommend a a a less slippery material.
Excellent. And then I know from some of the public that are going to be raising their hands soon, the question of why can't we have a crosswalk over El Camino at Chadbourne? This council has many times said no to it, and I have a feeling it has something to do with the double-left turn lane from southbound El Camino Real onto Millbrae Avenue, but you might be prepared for that question. I have a feeling it's coming up. Councilwoman Pappen. Oh, and I'm sorry, one last thing. You had mentioned that along El Camino Real, we could move towards more contemporary. I guess I'm an old-timer. I love our Spanish or Mediterranean featured buildings that are on both El Camino Real and Broadway. I think it gives us character. I I shudder at some of the old buildings that have put in cheap aluminum windows and think it's one of our design faults, so I'm less I I I don't want to say I don't like contemporary, because there are certain places, but I am more of a traditionalist. And I will say for bike, bike parking things, I think that Councilwoman Pappen mentioned it, I have great examples, I'm sure you do too, of where they're actually quite fun and they're public art, or they allude themselves to shadow art like Redwood City. Some just really fun things to make people smile when they walk and ride through Millbrae. Councilwoman Pappen.
Thank you. Along the lines of transitioning the lights between Broadway, which we like, to El Camino, it has to be a more subtle transition, not the modern ones that were presented here. I get that we want to make El Camino somewhat different, but you're putting in beautiful trees and medians here, and I think the transition has to be a lot smoother as to the lights we put on El Camino Real. Do the medians on El Camino Real include bioswells? I think that's really important to the health of the trees or whatever landscaping goes in there. And then, as was mentioned here, because I don't know how many of us have screwed up the front of our cars. What's the average curb height like on Broadway? So many people pull too much forward and, oh, shoot, I did it again. So, you know, I don't know where the law is on that, I don't know where any of this is, but we've all hit the curb. So having some consistent curb height that doesn't screw up a lot of cars, I mean, I get the high-performance people with all those things, but, you know, a lot of cars these days are scraping the front. So those are my three questions there. Thank you.
Councilwoman, do you want them to answer or come back?
I think with the lights, you'd actually have to come back. With the curb height, I think that's just a general kind of, I don't know where we are in the process. And then the bioswells, yeah, if you can give me an answer for El Camino. And then the bioswells, yeah, if you can give me an answer for El Camino Real. Caltrans really needs to get on board with us on that front. Um, and I think this is a prime opportunity for them to show leadership. If we get a plan going that includes all that. I think they would have no problem joining us in this process. Part of the reason they're so active in Burlingame right now is because those. Eucalyptus trees are such a danger to the public. So this is an even better opportunity for them to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
The, the answer on the bioswells is yes. The, the idea for all of these green spaces that we've shown on El Camino Real is that it would be. A combination of different ground plane planting types. But we would integrate stormwater management into that, which would be the bioswale. Other areas might not have bioswale, but they would have these continuous soil trenches that Jake spoke about. And that's a, the next level of detail as to which one we go where, but the intent is yes, definitely. We'd want to get some of that stormwater function into the corridor.
Excellent. Thank you. Planning Commissioners, I know you've been very patient.
Sorry, I don't have the hand raised. Sorry, sorry to jump in here. Before you go to the planning commission, I would like to just address, uh, Councilmember Holibur's. Inquiry about how do we finance this? How do we fund this, right? And um, this is not a pie in the sky plan. Um, by, by no means do we want it to sell it. We want to implement it and we were hearing that from the council. But in terms of the funding sources, um, there, there are several. So. General Fund, um, as you know, we're, we're growing our tax base. We're, we're continuing with a robust economic development effort. Um, so our general fund uh, is one source. Uh, enterprise funds. Uh, will be another source. Our development impact fees uh, are a source. Implementation of parking meters and the parking meter revenue uh, will be a source. In lieu parking fee, so as new development comes in, uh, if, if there are. Number of parking spaces that they're required to, to, to build on site. Uh, but we can accommodate them in shared parking on peripheral parking garages. They will pay a parking in lieu fee. Um, and, and that's another uh, funding source. Grants, um. Grants, I think in a situation now like this where we will have an adopted plan. We'll have a purpose. We can get shovel ready. We'll be very competitive for grants because it's, it's, it's adopted and it's a plan. And we're in the implementation mode. Uh, community benefit uh, i- is another source. So we have, we have multiple uh, uh, funding sources that we will be tapping into. And as Darcy said, we do have an economist on board that will help us in terms of what the absorption will be. And what our payment capacity is. And then what financing mechanisms, perhaps it's a, a revenue bond. That we're using the revenue coming off of our paid parking meter program uh, when we get there. So I just wanted to address um, that issue uh, from the council member. Or that question, I should say.
Thank you, City Manager. I would put on the shopping list, though. We are still waiting for the public art fee. Which is usually a tiny, tiny percentage and a climate change or climate resiliency fee. And those, we've been waiting for, for a while there, so that should be another source of revenue. And if, as the county looks at stormwater improvements. This, that, I mean, that hasn't happened yet, but that is another uh, possibility that was discussed with Assemblyman Mullin yesterday. On that more money for uh, stormwater, which all the bioswells would play in very well with. So. Uh, Chair Joe, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. And um, I don't need the answers here, so I will just add, put in my comments because I know we're, it's already almost seven thirty right now. Uh, I, I would like to say I, I really like everything. I think it was done, very well done. So thank you to all the staff and. Our uh, uh. Consultants for all the work that you've done. Uh, on page twelve of the report or the packet that we received. There are recommendations for El Camino Real. And I'd like to suggest adding something specific to the frontage roads. And being able to make sure that their access is better. Because right now they're a danger coming in and out. Um, I'm on, my office is on the, uh, the Cruz and El Camino. And I hear horns honking all day long because people are doing weird things going in and out and it's very unsafe, so. Uh, prioritizing safety, but also uh, making them more vibrant, activating them. I think Councilmember from mentioned that as well, but the, the parklets and having a little more. Uh, maybe a little more information on that. So I, I, that would be a suggestion to add that into the overall improvements. Recommendations uh, in terms of. I, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I, I would actually like to see Millbury and El Camino Real, the, that intersection. Maybe a little bit more thought because I think that's a, that's a special, different, special, unique intersection. And so maybe if there's a good way to address that, or I, I don't have anything. Concrete in my head, but I just feel like that is definitely something unique and it would be good to see a little bit more on that. In terms of, I, I did agree that I think we need more seating on Broadway and maybe as we expand the planters. I think it was in one of the pictures, but where, where you have the planters where people can sit around it as well. I like that idea. Uh, and then I definitely don't, I, I also agree that we shouldn't do this in phases. I just think, you know, it's hard to get things to move forward. And once we do it, I think it's better to do it at once. And there are certain things about the phases where I feel comfortable as well, that it could be, if we're stuck with it, there could be some. Situations where you have the bike lanes directly up against the, the cars. And whatnot. I just don't think it's a good idea to try to do it in phases if we can do it all at once. I also had, in terms of the lighting, I like the idea of Broadway and El Camino being a little bit different in that they. You know, you have a little bit more traditional Broadway, a little bit more modern on El Camino. But I would agree that I think we need to be very careful about that transition and perhaps El Camino is. Not all the way contemporary. I, I know you didn't have it on the, the main scale, but I think in terms of the lighting and the transition. Of the lighting and the furniture and whatnot, it's, it's a very short block. So to have an abrupt transition i- in terms of the style, I would be a little bit, I, I would just want to be more mindful of that. Uh, and then finally, the bike and multipurpose lane uh, being up against each other. I, I don't understand that part, so when we come, when it comes back, maybe I'll understand it better, but I. On El Camino, having a bike lane and then a multipurpose lane. That, that doesn't quite, um, I, I don't quite understand all of that and how that would work. And a little bit concerned and I. I'm assuming that Commissioner Del Negro, our biker, biker in chief will, you have some input on that, whether that feels right or not. Because I don't, I should bike, but I don't, so uh, I, so I don't know, but just intuitively, it doesn't feel. Safe to, to have it in that direction, so. And other people have mentioned what I was going to say, what I was going to ask about, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Joe. I am, uh, Planning Commissioners, I'm sure you've got a few comments. I'm not seeing hands. I can't see you waving at me.
Uh, Madam, Madam Mayor, would it be helpful if I spent just a minute? Uh, explaining the, the protected, uh, parking protected bike lane again.
Certainly, and for every, yes. I know we're running long tonight, but this is critically important. Um, so I appreciate everyone taking the time and all of the, the excellent comments being made. Please, go ahead, Mister. I lost you.
Stickley, thanks.
Mister Stickley, please. And then Commissioner Del Negro, then Commissioner Wong.
Okay, so Jake, if you could switch to the e, to the parking protected. Configuration first. Okay, so, um, Commissioner Joe, if you look on the, on the right-hand side here. You can see where we've got the eight-foot parking lane, okay? So that means that the cars are parked to the outside of the bike lane. Right? So people getting in and out of the car are crossing the bike lane to get to the sidewalk. And that's, we think that's okay in the majority of the corridor, and that's also what the ATP recommends. And the, the advantage here is that the bike lanes are really protected. You know, they've got a row of parked cars. Protecting them from the flow of traffic. Uh, the disadvantage is that you've got. Car, uh, you know, car riders, drivers and passengers getting in and out of cars and crossing the bike lane. So there's a potential conflict there. But we think in this northern section. Where you've got a more, especially in the future land uses, you've got more of a predominance of residential entries. And less commercial frontages, that that could work okay, just because of. The frequency of people parking and getting out of their cars is going to be less. Um, so that's northern El Camino Real. Now, Jake, if you now flip to the southern configuration. What we think is the difference here. Is, and what we're suggesting is. That the parking lane against the curb, we think might work better here for the, for the reason. That Jake explained, that there's this. Increased activity between the, the curb lane and the storefrontages. And, and we do have more active frontages on this southern portion of El Camino Real. Because it's more associated with downtown, with the frontage roads across, you know, across the street on the west side, et cetera. And so that curb lane becomes used a lot more for other things besides parking. It's where drop-offs are happening, it's where uh, bike share racks are put, maybe parklets. Um, it's where you have service and delivery and you have some parking. So it's a whole combination of these things that are, that are trying to happen in association with a more active. Building frontage. And so for that reason, we think that those activities are more appropriate next to the curb. Where people are not crossing through the bike lane, you know, to get back and forth, to do all those activities. So that's what we're suggesting is that for these southern three blocks. That we, we go with this configuration, which puts the multi-curb lane. Slash parking lane next to the curb and then the bike lane is, is to the outside of that. Now. You might think, well, that's less protection for the bike lane, but that's why we're providing this six-foot. Uh, bike buffer, you know, just to give a, a little bit more protection.
So if a car were driving down there and they wanted to pull aside to use the multi-use curb lane. Whether to actively load a remote or to park or whatnot, they would actually be crossing, have to cross cycles or.
Correct. They would cross the bike lane and, you know, all this is trade-offs. There are, you know, pros and cons to both, but that, that is one of the conflict points on this. But we've seen in, in other places where this happens, that. That's sort of a manageable flow. If someone's pulling over, they're generally aware of the bikes flowing. And they wait for that break and then, and then they pull across.
Hey, I, I guess I, I want to be, I want to be clear about something too, is that this is not. Uncontroversial, or just, there are lots of differences of opinion about this. I just want to be clear about that, and I think that's why we ultimately do need. Uh, your and your community's input on this. Um, there's, there's, the, the, you know, it's not, this isn't science. There's trade-offs and it's a decision that needs to be made by your community ultimately.
Uh, for me personally, I, I, I feel uncomfortable with that because people come down to El Camino really fast, maybe it will change at some point, but. To see cars pulling aside and being mindful of bicyclists, I, I'm not comfortable with that personally. Thank you.
Yep, no, thank you.
Thank you, WRT and Commissioner. Commissioner Del Negro.
Well, this is fantastic segue. Um, Jacob, I am a scientist, um, but I'm also cyclist. Um, and yes, it is very controversial. Um, I'm going to start off with the frontage road, um, section here. Um, I think you hit it out of the park here. Uh, this to me is gold. Um, the west side, the bike lane with a median with trees is fantastic. You're visible in the bike lane from people driving on El Camino on that side. It keeps you safe. They know you're there because they can see you through those trees. I would ask that the trees that are between the cars and the bike lane are not low canopy trees. Maybe the trees between the bike lane and the houses are low canopy. But you want the ones that are between the lane of traffic and the bike lane to be high. So that while you're driving down El Camino Real, you can see those bicyclists in that bike lane before you make a right-hand turn to cross it. That is very important. So, um, I would like to ask you, what is the normal expectation code-wise for a bike lane? On the speed of El Camino Real, six-six, five-three, what is the expectation legally and responsibly? Um, I'll get back to that in a second. I would like to get your opinion on what that is. Um, I do ask, um, also that if we are putting on El Camino Real any parklets. That none of those parklets are blinding the intersections. And the ability of people to walk around and through a bike lane from behind a parklet. Some of them have high walls to create privacy. But if they are high walls and somebody walks around a corner into a bike lane, that's an impact between pedestrians and a bicyclist. It's very dangerous. I watch out for that element. Um, is there anywhere else on El Camino Real where there are bike, um, parking protected bike lanes? I don't believe so. I bike from here to Mountain View all the time. There's no length down there that I've seen that happen. So I'm going to come back to that in a minute with the north half. The bu- just, the bus drop-off zone, I know that, um, both Anders and Ruben were talking about this. Um, if that bus does stop in that lane of traffic and people have to go around it, it does have the benefit of slowing people down. But also, as Ruben pointed out, it does also create some uh, chaotic behavior by drivers pulling into the center lane. I'm actually more concerned about people using the middle lane to make a right-hand turn around a bus. That's parked, because now they're coming around the blind turn of a bus and they can't see bicyclists and pedestrians at the intersection. That does concern me more. I do want you to go, can you go to the picture of the street that shows the Millbury Avenue? Um, round Linden. I know it's one of the later slides. Keep going down this, this set right here to. I'm sorry, the inset.
One of these?
Yeah, keep going to the, I think it's the last one. That, that, this one right here. So this is real detail here, but between Millbury Avenue and Linden, you're showing three parking spots. Um, that are in front of what's now Pete's Cafe. Um, that's a red zone right now.
Here.
Very dangerous place to put any parking, considering the speed which people come around that corner. I'd be very careful about not putting that there. And that's a small detail, but I noticed it. Um, and of course, the other part here is that you don't show the California Drive Extension at Victoria. Um, in this, there is obviously going to be a road at some point that should come out at Victoria. Uh, we should probably put that into our design. Let's see here. Now let's talk about the uh, parking protected bike lanes. Uh, when we put together the ATP plan, I protested. Um, I pleaded, I beat, I beseeched you not to, to put that in there. I was told it was an option. It was one of many options. But it was only an option. Um, bike protected bike lanes are extremely dangerous as a cyclist. I never want to be in one. I don't want to be on one because the lane of traffic cannot see me on the other side of cars. I go eighteen miles an hour and that's the average of an amateur bicyclist. Pros go twenty-five miles an hour or more on a bicycle. I'm riding around sixteen to eighteen miles per hour. And I come to an intersection and there are cars between me and cars that are making a right-hand turn. They can't see me in time to stop. It's extremely dangerous. I actually think you did everything right on the frontage road half. But actually dislike everything north of Taylor. I really would prefer to see the parking like the multi-use. Throughout the whole length of this road. For the safety of cyclists. And I, I employ with passion on that. That to me scares me. And I'm not scared of much on a bicycle. Race Stella drums for decades. Um, I also do want to ask, um, benches, goodness, and the details of the, just make sure all benches can't be slept on. Um, that's always a problem. They're, if they're highly visible, you know, it's fine. But, you know, any benches that are on street sides that. Don't have something interfering or sleeping on it, it's a problem. Often a parking wreck.
Uh, Commissioner Christopher, you are muted. Still muted.
All right, I'm unmuted.
There you go.
You're, you're in now.
Right, how, did you hear about the benches?
You just.
Right, all right, so the big belly trash cans.
Um, so, so can I jump in? We didn't hear, I, at least I didn't unless somebody else.
So can I jump in it? We didn't hear, I at least I didn't unless somebody else on staff took notes. He said benches and then cut out.
That's that's all I heard.
All right. So on benches, just make sure they can't be slept on. That's a big thing for parking ref. We're always conscious of the fact that benches, especially if they're not in the most highly visible areas, can become beds. And really are not beneficial to a community. The big belly trash cans that you're showing, they're really cool looking. I sat this morning in front of Starbucks and watched every single person avoid using it and go over and use the open one because nobody wants to touch it. It's COVID. They're cool. They work great as far as protecting the trash, but right now, not very beneficial. I'd ask us to think about that a little bit. Obviously, I also agree with the group that I'm against the phase. I think this is something you have to go straight. The five and three do scare me, the temporary element. Although I do like, obviously, I know Ruben liked one, doesn't want to lose the parking. But yeah, you can't obviously have a bike lane with a parking there if you're going to reduce the lane size. I also want to know more about some technology, what technology we can incorporate right now into some of our designs, whether that be, you know, even things like wifi access into into light systems. I'm always conscious of when we're upgrading, whether or not there's something else we can add. It's just opportune time. See, oh, I wanted to also ask about the frontage road. Right now you can park diagonal on the right hand side of the frontage road, but also on the left hand side is parallel parking. Are we talking about getting rid of the parallel and keeping the diagonal?
Yes.
Okay. I would opt, I I put the option that that parallel is actually a better loading zone. Or if to Ann's point about, you know, people wanting parking that's not consumed and they can jump in and out of businesses quickly, quickly. You know, short term parking would be nice on that if you were keeping the parallel. And I do agree with Gina, the Broadway front lights are awesome. I do like the Broadway lights. Would like to see those kind of more uniform through the full project, actually. I think that's it for now. I do want to ask, maybe you can address verbally now for the group, what is considered safe bike lane and buffer zone? For El Camino Real at the speeds that we're at and whether or not there is going to be a door zone painting to help the cyclists to avoid door zones.
I would have to defer to Kittleson, who's unfortunately not here for this, that standard of bike lane facility with related related to the speed of traffic. I personally haven't seen that. But that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So I can't answer that question. It's certainly something we can look into. I think you're raising a good point.
But I think in in general, we were using the the five and three as the bare minimum.
Right.
And so that's what we were trying to get in that northern segment.
Yeah, but to be honest, I I don't know that that's directly related to a speed limit for the cars. So that's a good question.
Bike lanes themselves are not allowed in certain areas where your speeds are excessive, you know, without being protected. There are rules for California for some elements of bike lanes. I don't know. It is one of those elements that's regulated by speed.
Right. And certainly the ATP would have addressed that, but the ATP and it's a good question, but our understanding right now is that the ATP recommends the parking protected bike lane. It's 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 more than an option. It's there. It's the recommendation of the ATP. So that's that's our understanding of that right now.
Not what we discussed in the B pack and I protested during the discussion at the planning commission.
I think we just have to note that. But just to answer your question, that 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 would be addressed in the ATP, those technical questions of standards and and the and the relationship between the speed limits for the cars and and all of that. But we are our understanding is we're consistent with the ATP with the exception of what we brought up with the southern four blocks, the northbound side. So but we will, we will look into that question of what's the, what's the relationship between the speed limit and the bike facility. I think there was a second question you asked there that I wanted to to answer.
Maybe about the bus spot locations. You said that they are going to park on street. Will cars be allowed to make a right hand turn from the middle lane around the buses park?
They shouldn't be. No, I don't believe that's allowed and I understand the concern.
But the bus stops are are far side bus stops, right Jake?
Well, it varies. There is a re on in some cases, they are near side on the northbound. And I honestly would have to go back and look at notes from that meeting, but that was something we discussed is whether they should be far side or near side. And typically far side is preferred, but there are near side bus stops on the southbound side. I think it had to do with avoiding conflicts with the frontage road.
I think so.
Yeah. So there is that potential on those bus stops on the southbound side.
I had one more question. If you can go to, I believe it is slide page twenty five.
Hey, just one other comment, sorry, on the buses stopping in the travel lane. I believe the reason that we ended up with that in the in the final in the phase two is because that's the preferred configuration for the the bus operations. When they have the pull offs, they they tend to get stuck in the pull off lane, can't get back into the traffic lane. And so it's actually slowing down the bus efficiency. So it's it's definitely a, you know, the 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 bus mode perspective rather than the than the car driver perspective. But I think that's that's the logic that we were following here.
Well, this gets to that point about a bike protected bike lane, you know, when you're they're parked in the street and you can't make a right hand turn. That bicyclist in that lane is protected, truly protected now because nobody can turn across them. When they're in a button, a bike, a bus pullout, now somebody can go, can't see you behind the bus.
Yeah.
On this slide, I did want to point out on your islands that you show on the the top of this slide on the northbound direction. These little islands that are at the intersections, yes, those guys right there. Those are risk zones for cyclists hitting those curves. What elements are included in those those little islands that helps to make sure cyclists see them? That's really important. I know that a program done down in Southern California, my hometown of Ojai creates elements that were out in the street like this and they've had five bicycle accidents in a location that's never had a bicycle accident recorded before. Because people are hitting objects that are out there. I just want to ensure that they're very, very visible to the bicyclists. If they're raised.
Yeah, good point.
All set, Commissioner?
That's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Wong took his hand down. Welcome to come back, Commissioner Vice Chair Davis.
I'm gonna go really fast because we're supposed to have public comment too, and it's ten to eight. You asked about four different categories, design concepts. I think you're going in the absolute right direction, the traditional stuff downtown and phasing out to something a little bit more contemporary on El Camino is great. Yes, please don't phase.
Commissioner, you're you're phasing out. You might want to turn off your camera.
On the bike lanes.
Vice Chair, we can't hear you. There you go. Try again.
I'm not the expert on bicycling in any way, shape or form, but it it feels like if there's going to be bike lanes, so there was talk about whether there's parking or a bike lane or whatever. If we're going to have a bike lane, we need to have a bike lane the whole length. So I don't understand, but that that feels important. And on the trees and planting, you know, there was the the section that talked about providing soil for the trees and whatnot. Please give the trees every possibility to grow and thrive because they are the linchpin of the greenery. And we're making a huge investment and they need to be able to survive for a long time, to do everything you can for the trees. The draft is incredibly well thought out. Thank you for all your hard work. And I guess it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Quigg.
I have to unmute. I agree. We want to hear what the public has to say also, so I'm going to make mine very short. I I think going into phase two is probably a better idea because I in my mind was thinking how long is it going to take to do phase one and then phase two? So I I'm glad that was brought up. I am no expert on bustling. I have driven in the areas up in Sacramento where the fine lanes are there and for people like myself, it's very confusing. So whatever you guys do, do it to make it safe for the bikers and try to make it safe for the drivers. Something came up about how many parking spaces we will lose and we were told twenty percent. Twenty percent is how many? I I can't visualize it. I don't expect an answer right now. But I I can't really visualize what twenty percent less is. And then I think I heard somebody saying that you're looking for a possible garage. It's a question, doesn't have to be answered right now. But if the garage is going to be built, where would the funds come for the garage? There was something else, unfortunately. Potential. You know, why don't I just, there was something at the beginning. Oh. I love the trees. Yes, do whatever you can to protect the trees. I agree with Commissioner Del Negro, yes. Everything you can do on the El Camino to protect the bikers would be fantastic. Yeah, and I still am a little confused when I hear people saying they're driving on their bicycle or biking that they're going eighteen or twenty miles an hour and how that really it just kind of scares me for the bikers out there, but I'm not a biker and maybe that's the difference. So I think that's it. Anything else, I'll just send a note later. I see that Commissioner Wong wants to say something and then there is other people that want to say something. I've got to say, it was a wonderful presentation. And I'm glad to see that there's a lot of participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quigg. Commissioner Wong.
To be part of this process, I see a lot of good work being done here. To add a couple of comments that'll add value to this process. One main observation that I see is that the west side of El Camino, it's it's a winner. It's blockable. It has commercial properties. It's activated. There's outdoor dining, safe. So when we talk about upgrading El Camino, I think mainly about all the new residents, the new developments that are going to be on the east side. And those are primarily tailored to people in these large housing developments. TOD projects and on TOD one, TOD two, et cetera. So what I see is that anything we can do to help provide them with more grading space, including, you know, the bigger street, wider medians, even more so than on the west side, because the west side, as I said, it's it's a winner. So we need to think about how we're going to design this space on the east side and how we can tailor it to them. One of the key features for those projects is that they're designed differently now. They're designed with big parking lots and bigger lots so that we're converting all those spaces now to housing developments and people that live there. And so there's going to be driveways. Some of the lots are landlocked. There's going to have to be drive, people driving in and out of there through El Camino or through the the El Camino side because they don't have any other way to get in. And so that if we do have that breaking up this long walkway, this long escalade, then it might make sense to have parklets, public parklets that are green belts that are enjoyable for people to walk their dog or to have benches and to, you know, play spike ball. These are new people. It could make sense to have both two way bike lanes on that side of El Camino because these people are going to be mobile. They're going to be going back and forth to park. These are the new young people. And that could be the main thoroughfare that kind of queues up if people walk their bikes across El Camino from the west side and then they get in this queue of bike lanes and go down, sit down over to the Bard Station. That might make sense. Just some ideas to think about as we get more into the details or more details. If we have this parklets, public parklets it makes sense to look at the destination points and the starting points, the Bard Station, City Hall. I know there's very long thoroughfares without any place to stop and take a breath. So these long walkways, it's makes sense to think about where people would stop and take a break or just sit and relax or come out of these TOD projects and want to take their dog out or get some breathing room. Play spike ball or just move around. Ideally, it might be even be if you can fit in a little basketball court, you know, semi half sized basketball court or even things like that. There's no parks in the downtown area. We don't have any park areas for people just to sit, enjoy. Be active right there. So we should think about that and that would add to the development of our city. So that's those are the main main ideas and the main things I see.
Thank you, Commissioner Wong. Councilman Fung, and then we'll go to public comment. Public, if you could start raising your hand so I can see how many comments we have. Thank you.
Yeah, just want to be real quick on that. I don't want to lose that point while we're on that discussion. So according to you said earlier in the discussion while Commissioner Del Negro was asking about the bike lane versus the multi use curb lane where the parking can happen. Is it the ATP recommendation that we use to protect the bike lane, meaning you have the parked car on the far side protecting the traffic from the the bike, pedestrian, the bike, the bike traffic?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, if that was what the recommendation is, then perhaps, you know, we can think about, you know, from a safety perspective, consider using far side bus station, meaning at the beginning of the block rather than the end of the block. Right? You know, especially on the northbound El Camino Real traffic so that we can eliminate the possibility of people making a right hand turn you know, into the bike lane and therefore not seeing, you know, the, you know, the bike the bike and the pedestrians, number one. So number two, perhaps, you know, at the, at the end, at the beginning of the block, where we could use some of those you know, multi use curb lane as a bus stop where the bus could pull into. You might, you know, lose a few, you know, parking space, but that could possibly be a little space where you could use for the bus to create a sort of a bus stop situation so that the traffic doesn't get doesn't get stopped, right? So those are just some, I mean, obviously I'm not a traffic engineer, but just some suggestions to consider. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. I see Commissioner Quigg and Councilman Holibur. If you can wait for after public comment, can you give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down? Do you want to go first? Okay.
Quigg wants to go under public comment.
Under public comment. I thank you and very good. First up is for pub, we're opening up to public comment. And Michelle Khan, please go ahead. Ms. Khan, did we lose you? City clerk, is she on the phone?
She is.
There we go.
There you go.
Go ahead.
Oh, hello. Can you hear me good?
You're coming in a little faint, but fine.
Oh, thank you so much for taking my comment. I appreciate your time and for all the information. Just had a few quick questions. I won't keep anybody too long. I was just wondering if the hotel was looking into any potential fees or kind of assessments that they're going to kind of pass on to the property owners that are already here, you know, parcel taxes or any kind of other fees? Kind of fun to plan.
I think the city manager can answer that. Did you have any other questions? Because once you speak, then then you lose your opportunity.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
So your your question, just to clarify, are with any of the new developments, are there fees that help pay for this?
That are going to be passed on to current property owners.
Okay, very good. Thank you. City manager, you've City Manager, you've got that and we can come back at the end?
Yeah, I can answer real quick. No, there's not. Development impact fees only pay for the impact that they create on, as a part of the new population. The development impact fees are not used for current deficiencies or maintenance.
Oh, perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Nathan Chan.
So thanks very much for this opportunity to address you on this important issue today. I just wanted to, I really, really, really like this plan. I loved the vision of it. I loved all the, a lot of the proposals that were put forward. And I want to sort of remind everyone that, you know, the original vision of the, that was at the very front of the plan was that Boulevard St. Germain, which was a very pedestrian friendly environment with very, not a single car in sight. And so I think that's, if that's the vision that we're striving for, that's what should be guiding us. You know, I've heard a lot of discussion today about how we can sort of compromise between pedestrian and bike access and cars. And I think we need to make a firm commitment to, to something that would be more amenable for pedestrians and bicyclists. Just as an alternative perspective, on the multi-use curb lane being to the right of the bike lane, I actually think that that's a mistake. I, there's a pretty high risk to being doored when biking, when the parked, cars parked on your right inside. I know someone who, you know, was hurt in such an incident. And so to me, it's safer to have the car be on the left-hand side. It's also, there's a much greater risk of double, illegal double parking, blocking a bike lane in the case of the park, parking lane being the right, which then creates an even more hazardous situation for bicyclists who then go have to, have to go into the main flow of traffic to get around this illegal double parked vehicle to counteract some of the pedestrian concern. You know, maybe there could be a limitation of parking at the, closer to the intersection so that it's more visible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Park and Rec Commissioner Quigg.
Thank you very much. It was a nice presentation. The vision is beautiful. It would make our city look good. I support going to the second phase also, because to do things in piecemeal doesn't work out very well. The two concerns that I have is number one, if we take the diagonal parking out and we go to parallel parking and we don't have a garage available at the time when we do this, the merchants downtown will not be delighted with that proposal. The second thing is on the north end, the bike lane, having a, a bike lane to the right of a parked car, I think is very, very dangerous. Because when people park their cars and they exit from their parking side of their vehicle, they're not used to looking first before they open their door. So if they open their door and there's a biker coming up behind them at 15 to 18 miles an hour, he's going to hit that door and go over the top of that car. I think that's a very dangerous situation. I think that we should relook at that. And I'm not a biker, but it just makes sense to me that that's a dangerous situation, because the public is not aware that somebody is going to be coming alongside their right-hand door when they open that door. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Quigg. Jean Wong.
Hi, thank you, everyone for, who worked on this plan. It's obviously a well thought, thought out plan and obviously lots of work and effort gone into it. And, and it's been beautifully thought through. I just have a very quick question. What is the vision for the streets that run perpendicular to El Camino and Broadway? I think it's really important that the side streets are not overlooked and, and that the plan actually takes the streets, the side streets into consideration, because there are businesses along the side streets. And it would be nice if they also have the same look and feel as Broadway, so that it would be enticing for, for people to wander around those streets and also to patronize the businesses that are there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Ms. Khan, you've already had your opportunity. But I'll, I'll give you a minute if you can be really quick. And unmute yourself.
Well, thank you so much. No, it's okay. I won't take anybody's time. I'll wait for the next meeting. Thank you.
No, and you know, in the meantime, and to anyone in the public, please send us your, your ideas and concerns. Staff is here. Any of your council members are here. I can't speak for the other council members, but anytime the public contacts me, I ask permission and I forward it to staff. So please don't feel that this is your only one shot. This was a collection of ideas. To the public, this is your last chance. Please raise your hand. City Clerk, could you tell me if there's anybody on the phone that I'm not seeing?
I do not see anyone with their hand up.
Okay.
In Zoom or on their, on the phone.
Thank you, City Clerk. With that, I am going to close public comment. Originally, at the very beginning, Ms. Smith, you had a slide with the decisions that you needed to hear from us tonight. Could you pull that slide up? And then I know Councilman Hollibur had his hand up again. Councilman, if you want to go, I've been trying to take notes where I think we have consensus between council and planning commission. But let's do another round of council, Councilman Hollibur and then Pappen. While Darcy is trying to find the slide with what we have to give them direction on.
Thank you. Very quickly, I think that was a great last comment by the speaker about including something about the side streets to perhaps have a similar layout for the side streets with Broadway. I think that's very important. Also wanted to echo Councilmember Fung's comment about if you were to use the multi-use lanes, multi-use parking lanes for the bus stops, then that would eliminate the need for the bus island. And by doing that, that would potentially eliminate the need for such a wide bike buffer, which better use some of that space elsewhere. And I know there's, I think, a consensus to not do Phase One to go straight to Phase Two. I would just recommend leaving it in the plan just as an option. I know it's not the preferred option. But at this point in time, we don't have any price tags. We don't have any budget for anything. So I think it would be short sighted to take it out entirely, even if the preferred plan would be to go immediately to Stage, Phase Two. You know, another option for phasing could be one block at a time or two blocks at a time. I have a hard time seeing funding being available to do all the entire El Camino corridor all at once. So those are just my two thoughts. And Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to make one quick announcement at the very end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We can only dream that maybe the funding will miraculously all come through. Councilwoman Pappen. We can't hear you, Councilwoman Pappen, but you're not muted. Still can't hear you. Okay, I heard some sound there. Was that? Nope. While we are working on a technical difficulty, this is what I have heard. And staff, correct me if I've missed something. It sounds like there's consensus to go straight to, to Phase Two, although I hear Councilman Hollibur's at least keep it in the plan, but that our direction is Phase Two. The bicycle facilities on El Camino Real, I always like to hear what Commissioner Del Negro says, given his experience. I think we're all in agreement on planning, concept on green infrastructure, as much planning, as much safety and security and opportunity for trees and planting. The design concepts on Broadway and El Camino Real, I agree with Park and Rec Commissioner Quigg that if we, when we do go to parallel parking and wider sidewalks on Broadway, we should have a plan to ensure that people can park and get to, to the merchants on the streets. I know that the Sierra Club, of which I'm a part of, likes to think we don't need the parking. But that said, when you have older people, you realize how much more valuable parking is and parking that really truly isn't blocks away. Older people really and truly cannot do that. Councilwoman Pappen, I'm not trying to cut you off. We're just waiting until we can hear you. There you go. Good to go. So I think we've got consensus on three things, but go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, yes, I'm, I'm a little confused where we ended up. And I'm sure we can pick it up in the next meeting as to the bike lanes, because I see a lot of these separated bike lanes in downtown San Francisco. So I'm sure we're going to look at that again there. What I would like to mention is that if we're talking about the Big Belly Trash Pans as part of this, they do have now a foot thing where you don't have to pull it down yourself. So we, it probably costs more, but I've seen them now that have a foot. It opens up, but you just push the pedal. And lastly, electrical infrastructure. This is going to be a star project. I would hope that if you are putting in medians, there's some electrical infrastructure. So during the holidays, we can make it spectacular, both on Broadway and El Camino. Just want to put that in as a note there. I will disagree with my colleague, Councilmember Hollibur. Now is the time to make the big presentation. Let's just put this whole package together if we can reach some consensus and go for the gusto. There are a lot of grants out there for the, you know, ways, or the stormwater, all kinds of things. And for projects that are ready to go, the money, I think it's out there. And I think we can find this. And as to the question about technology too, Councilmember Hollibur and I on CMAC together, and we received some sort of a grant recently about some technology on El Camino. And both of us, I don't think are quite sure what that was. So hopefully staff does and can enlighten us at a later point. So those are my closing remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. So in terms of process, I think it's bicycles can alert signals that they're coming, is what that new system connected with Wi-Fi is.
Madam Mayor, the one, I think limitation to that system that requires each user to have an app and to be using the app. So if you're not aware of the system, then it's not going to track you.
Exactly. But it's something to be building into this plan since we will have it. Okay, I, in terms of design concepts for Broadway and El Camino, I only see two other council members, I guess. Shoot, let me figure out how I can see all of you. This is informational, so we're not technically voting. I hear Councilwoman Pappen saying, maybe we're not completely sure on bicycle, how the bicycles should be planned on El Camino and that might have to come back to us. Staff, where are you? Do you think you've gotten enough direction from planning and council? Or do you have a, do you have a couple of questions for us to clarify where we're all at?
Well, I'll let the, the technical experts weigh in, but I think we got some really good directions tonight. Thank you very much. And again, this is something that, you know, we wanted this feedback. We'll go back, you know, to the drawing board, make those refinements, you know, look at, look at the, the bike lanes on, on El Camino and the safety issues that were brought up. And, and then some of the other direction for sure. But this, this was terrific, great direction. But I'll hand it over to our consultants and Darcy on the, on the technical sides.
And I see you, Commissioner Wong. Let's hear from the, from staff, where they are and what we need clarification on.
I'll just defer to our excellent consultants, but I'll just close and say, I think, I think this was a real roll up your sleeves and work interactive study session, which was just great to see. And yeah, as a result of, of previous meetings, we learned that you want, you, you want to provide the vision and the feedback. And so I think it worked really well to get all your feedback. And I think especially for a consultant team who spends hours and hours and hours getting everything ready, you know, they want to make sure it matches your vision, as you heard, right? What, there's some community decisions here that should be community led and these are our streets. So I'll turn it over to them and I'll just say in closing, thank you so much for rolling up your sleeves and working and especially I think on Zoom, it's great to be able to see these graphics upfront and, and work very hard. So I appreciate how much, how much work you put into this. And it will immensely help us to put the finishing touches on this to bring back the next draft.
Very good. Commissioner Wong, and then some questions on timing or timeline.
Because this is conceptual, it's not detailed design. I would recommend that you have enough flexibility in these presentations and in the designing part, that there may be flexibility for modifications. I mean, obviously we haven't had the full designs for some of these other developments like Anton and TOD one. So things may be in flux, so we need to be able to adapt our plan to the plans that are, other plans that are put before us, private developers too.
I think you, you came in a little bit garbled, Commissioner Wong, about flexibility in the plan for other developers' plans. But I believe that this is how we want it and developers will flex to our plans. The difference where I do agree with you is when new green infrastructure designs might come up or maybe the best design of a bike safety, you know, having enough flexibility in the plan to incorporate the latest science, the latest data on keeping our cyclists safe, which really comes down to the door zone. So with that, I want to thank staff. This was really terrific. And thank you to our consultants on the project. This is terribly exciting. I absolutely agree with Councilwoman Pappen that the fastest we can get this completed, the best, the soonest we can go out looking for money. If the infrastructure money comes from the feds, we need to be as close to shovel ready. I know we don't have design guides, design specs, but the faster we can get there, the better our chances of getting money in these still recovering from COVID periods. So my last question, city manager or Ms. Smith, is what would be the next steps? I know where, very in the beginning at 5:30, they talked about the timeline. But just let's close it off with what are the next steps?
Yeah, so this is, as I said, is an integral part of the specific plan. It's the public realm part, right? But it all integrates within the private realm. And that's the next step is to put the finishing touches on the specific plan and bring that to you for, for review early next year. And then a big piece of it, as I mentioned, is the SEQUA document. That just takes a lot of work, but I was happy to report earlier and I'll, and mention it again for our audience that we just released a really critical document there, the notice of preparation. And we're having what's called the scoping meeting December 16th. Check our website for more details. But we're moving fast along and we'll be back next year with, with some final, what we'll call final drafts along with the general plan and then proceed through like a lot of work in the spring and summer and then get back before you in the fall. Now, there's some incremental pieces we could do. For example, you know, if there was grants available, for example, for streetlights, I think we'd all love to replace the streetlights on Broadway and those can be set aside during construction. There's other incremental things you can do. But the bigger project, we'll definitely be working on the financing plan, as we mentioned, and putting the tools in the toolbox to make this happen. But we just need a little bit more time. But I will say you, you've showed us your bold vision and your support for this. And that's really, really heartening to see, because our consultants worked really hard and you know, want to make sure that their work is in alignment with that.
Excellent. Okay, with that, I, I get a lot of comments from the public saying, how come the city hasn't done XYZ? For the public watching, you do not know how much work has been happening behind the scenes on this. So to staff and our consultants, thank you so very, very much. I know you've been very busy. Thank you to city council and planning for putting up with this. I know we've had so many special meetings this year. I am grateful to all of you. We will see you on Saturday at, oh, go ahead, Councilman.
Sorry to interrupt. I just have one quick announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Yeah, last week I shared an email with the mayor and city manager and city attorney regarding SB nine, which will be going into effect January 1. I know the city is working on ordinance for implementation of SB nine, but I know a number of cities right now are, work doing urgency ordinances so that we can be protected once it goes into effect to give us some time for more permanent ordinance is, is crafted. So I hope the council would be supportive. So I hope the council would be supportive of that and I can make myself available anytime for a special meeting to get that done.
And because of the district elections, we do have a special meeting on December 8. If that's a possibility, I think we, we can't talk about it because it's not on the agenda, but that is an option.
Probably a little tight, but yeah, four weeks, basically.
You know what? It's important enough to have it on the reorganization. I know council doesn't like that, but it is critical and I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, thank you, everyone. Saturday at 10 o'clock is our first open house on the software for district elections. We have several special meetings again next week. If, and most important, we have our holiday tree lighting and public gathering at 5 o'clock this coming Saturday. I hope to see you all there. We are taking all the COVID precautions and thank you all for, for a lovely evening. And job well done to all of you.